How did you get to City Council? How did you get to City Council?
I think because his last name was S. I got skipped out. And Mayor Protem is over here.
Carlson's not? Is he still on the council?
He's either in Lima, Peru, or Lima, Ohio. I can't remember which one of the Lemias it is.
That's quite a difference.
Welcome, everyone. This is the Woodland Park City Council regular meeting for May the 1st, 2014. Call the meeting into order, and Cindy will take a roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Turley.
Present.
Gary Brevetto.
Here.
Bob Carlson. Carol Harvey.
Here.
Ken Matthews.
Here.
Noel Sawyer.
Here.
John Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, the first item on our business for today is, under presentations and awards and appointments, is proclamation of Arbor Day. And for that, I'm going to read a proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and around the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic viability of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, David Turley, Mayor of the City of Woodland Park, do hereby proclaim May the 21st, 2014, as Arbor Day. In the City of Woodland Park, I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And also do that clear space around your homes. Well, it's all the balance that you've got to find between, on all of this. When the trees are growing out of control, that's an issue, when they're too abundant in a small area. So, anyway, that's the proclamation for Arbor Day. Next, we have some appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and for that I'm going to turn to Cindy Morris.
Thank you. In your packet this evening, the staff report lets you know that there are four terms on the Parks Advisory Board that expired on April 1st. And we received applications from three incumbents and one new resident. The perfect storm this evening is that Trudy Layton, Sherri Carr, and the new resident, Ginger Williams, are out of town. However, one of our incumbent members, Panchita Osborne, has reapplied and is she's here tonight to answer any questions you may have. I also provided you with a report on meeting attendance. That's part of the policy, and I can answer any questions about that if you have any. The term of office for all these positions is two years. And if I might ask, since Trudy Layton and Sherri Carr are incumbents, it might be a good idea to reappoint them tonight, and then we'll get them swared in, be sworn in before the next park board meeting.
That'd be good. Any comments, questions from council? Would you like, Panchita, would you like to come out and talk to us?
Sure.
Right over here. Give us your name and address, and, you know, if you want to say a couple of things about serving on the board.
Panchita Osborne, 790 Skyline Drive, here in Woodland Park. We've lived here 15 years now, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. Moved from Houston. This is a much better climate. I've enjoyed serving on the Parks and Rec. I've learned a lot about the city. I've been really pleased working on the Memorial Park project, and glad to see that coming to fruition. And one reason I reapplied was hoping to see the development of that. So, that's why I'm here.
Very good. Any questions, comments for Panchita?
What's coming up with Parks and Recreation in terms of other projects?
That's a good question. I'm not really sure. I know we're doing a review of all of our parks right now to see what needs to be done.
Thanks for doing this again.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? Then I would entertain a motion that we approve Panchita, Sherri, and Trudy for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So moved.
A question, can we do Ginger at the same time?
If that's your pleasure. Ginger is new to the program, but if you'd like to go ahead and put her on, feel free.
So we'll need to withdraw that motion and have a new motion to appoint all four applicants.
That's council's desire. Okay. You withdraw your motion? Yes. Okay. Then I'll entertain a new motion.
Move to accept all four applicants for the positions that they've applied for on Parks and Recreation.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? I'll just add that, you know, in looking through the application, Ginger looks very well qualified, and I think will be a good addition to the board. There's no comments or questions, then we will take a vote.
Thank you. Brevetto.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And next, we'll move on to the appointments to the Utility Advisory Committee, and for that, we also turn to Cindy.
All right. On May 31st, three terms for regular members and one term for an alternate member on the Utilities Advisory Committee will expire. We've done our notification, and applications have been received from incumbent regular members Lee Willoughby and Rick McVeigh, who are here this evening, and also from resident, former council member Eric Smith. Alternate member Renee Bunting reapplied. She is with us this evening. The term of these positions will expire on May 31st, 2016. Your packet contains the staff report on meeting attendance. All applicants are here to answer any questions that you may have. What questions may I answer about the process?
Yeah, let me just make sure I understand. Cindy, which ones are for alternates?
There's one alternate position, and that's Renee Bunting.
One alternate. Any comments, questions from council? Any of the applicants like to come up and speak to us? Renee? Eric? No, I just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity. Name and address, please.
Oh, great. Lee Willoughby, 760 Pinion Ridge Drive. And what I want to do is thank all of the staff and the members for the incredible education I've gotten over the past two or three years. I mean, culminated, I think, and you may recall from about a month ago, when Kip brought to you the reconciliation report, which is the largest spreadsheet that I've ever seen. And so, if I've reached the point, I can look at that and not faint. I'm learning something. Thank you. And also, thank you, Gary Crane, for, what is it, 12 years, I think, he's served in that position. That is awesome. And it's been good working with you, and Ken, and Eric from the council, and the other members. So, this is one of those opportunities to volunteer where I really feel like there's been a very good payback to me.
I'm Rick McVeigh. I live at 110 East Lake, just down the street. I have to echo Lee's sentiment about the staff, and all I've learned, it's been truly stunning. I feel like they have an incredible amount yet to learn to be able to function 100% on this committee, but I'm willing to learn. Thank you.
Eric?
Good evening. Eric Smith, 525 Pembroke Drive, Woodland Park, Colorado. I echo the comments as well, especially Gary, who served for 12 years. This is one committee that I believe I spent six years on, all the, all six that I was on council, I think. And it takes a while, as you know, Mr. Mayor. It takes a while to kind of get up to speed, and this is an area that I think makes sense that I continue to serve. And so hopefully, you guys will feel the same way, and water is very important in our community, and, as you know, I have a passion for the reservoirs as well. So hopefully, I'll be able to continue to serve on that committee. So, thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Ken.
Well, I would just like to say, I've worked with these gentlemen and Renee in the past of being on the Utilities Advisory Committee, and I really appreciate it, and their service has been greatly appreciated. And I would encourage, do we have openings for other alternates?
We do. We advertise for it.
Okay. I would just encourage anybody who's thinking about it to get involved, because as Eric mentioned, and as all of us have experienced, this is not an easy issue. It takes a long time to even begin to understand water rights in Colorado and what we have to go through. And Kip, you know, keeps us on top of that. But getting on as an alternate up front is a good way to get started, to start picking up lingo and all that happens. So if anybody's interested at all, if there's more positions open, I'd certainly encourage you to do so. And thank all of you for your participation in the past.
And I will add to that, Ken, this particular committee, there's always a lot of issues to be discussed, and being an alternate is a really good way to get started. The alternates, even though they might not be voting at every meeting, are fully engaged as active members of the committee and have a lot of good opportunities to learn. And so, it's really good. Anything else? Yes, John?
Yeah, I'd like to know how long Lee and Rick have served on the committee. Rick?
I've been on the committee just a little shy of three years. August, I think, three years.
Lee?
Same. I came on the board.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
There are no term limits in, on this committee. I understand.
Yeah. Okay. Hearing no other thing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the appointments to the Utilities Advisory Committee as presented.
Second. Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, Cindy.
Thank you. Harvey.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Brevetto.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor, I am prepared to swear in all of the folks we've just appointed.
Let's do it.
Can everyone join me at the podium? Raise your hands and repeat after me. I, just give your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of.
Of.
On which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Okay, Panchita? And right there. Thank you. I'll get that fixed. Renee?
Here.
Eric?
I was thinking, you know, I could step down.
Thank you. Three. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. And moving on to item five, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. Cindy?
We have one correction. We'll correct it for the public hearing, ordinance number 1215, concerning the vacation of a portion of Aspen Street is not quasi-judicial, it's legislative.
Okay.
That's all we have.
And we'll move on to consent calendar, and for that, I'll turn to Cindy.
Thank you. Just two items this evening, the minutes from the April 17th regular meeting, and to approve a contract between the city and A1 chip seal for the chip seal street resurfacing project. What questions may we answer?
I guess I would ask, Bill, just maybe as a reminder for everybody, the chip seal resurfacing, kind of what all is that going to be entailing?
Sure. This year, 2014, we're going to focus geographically, instead of in the past, we focused on our main thoroughfare roads and the roads that were in older, worse condition. And so, this year, we'll be focusing on the northwest city core part of town. It's basically an area that is north of Highway 24 to Kelly's, east of Highway 67 to Park. So the area directly north here of City Hall and to the north northwest. And we'll be chip sealing almost every street within that grid.
Any comments? Questions? Hearing none, then I'll take a motion for approval, consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Motion, a second, approve the consent calendar as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, Cindy.
Thank you. Matthews.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Brevetto.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And moving on to item seven, we have a report on building code requirements for accessory dwelling units, and that's going to be Director of Planning Sally Riley.
Thank you, Mayor Turley. Good evening. This is a follow-up from about six weeks ago, when the council approved the accessory dwelling units, new legislation. And during that hearing, you had a question from Mr. Ken Hartsfield that dealt with exactly how the building department was going to perceive the plan review and the requirements for structures for an accessory dwelling. I have since confirmed with regional building department that accessory dwelling units will be considered still part of a single-family home, and that the plan review and the improvements will be in line with a single-family home as opposed to a duplex. This is a single-family home with two kitchens mainly. So, they were specifically pleased that we have our regulations in place that are thorough, require an affidavit for the owner to sign, that they are in compliance with the codes, the accessory dwelling unit code, and that that affidavit and approval will be included with the building permit and plan review, so that a regional building department is assured that these will be in compliance with our accessory dwelling unit codes. So with that, I think we are off and running, and we've already had several inquiries.
Any questions for Sally?
Just inquiries, no?
Just inquiries. We did, we have made up our application forms, and we're ready for the first person to walk through the door and says, we want to have a accessory dwelling in it.
Okay. Thanks, Sally.
Thank you.
And moving on to item eight, ordinances on initial posting. We do have one for ordinance number 1215, and for that, we'll turn to Lisa Barnell in planning.
We go from down to up? This request is for vacating the portion of Aspen Street that lies between Lake Avenue, the alley between Lake Avenue and South Avenue, down to South Avenue. Our applicants are Mr. Peter Papesku, and he is the property owner of Lot 12 of Block 9 that abuts to the west of Aspen Street, and Mr. Cop, Steve Cop, who is the property owner of vacant Lot 4 of Block 16. And they are requesting that this straight right-of-way be vacated, and in which they would, it would be equally divided between those two property owners in accordance with our Section 12.08 guidance. And Planning Commission did hear this request on the 24th of April, and recommended unanimously for approval. Wasn't going to get into any details tonight, because I know we've got a lot to cover. And so just asking that you would approve upon initial posting, ordinance 1215, setting the public hearing for May 15th, 2014.
Any questions for Lisa? Hearing none, then we'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, a motion to approve 1215, ordinance 1215, with the initial posting, with the follow-up on May 15th.
Hope that ring on May 15th. Second. Okay. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Cindy will take a vote.
Thank you. Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Brevetto.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Lisa. And now, we're going to move into item nine, public hearings, and just want to remind everyone that on the public hearings, you see council members using various electronic devices to access materials relevant to the public hearing. Before us, be assured that it is the common practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communication during the public hearings. In other words, all of the information that we're basing our decisions on is the information that's presented here in council chambers, and we're not receiving inputs from anyone through the electronic devices. And so, we'll move on to item 9A, ordinance number 1213, for a conditional use permit. And for that, we're going to hear from Lisa again.
Thank you, Mayor. This next request is for Denrick LLC. This is a request to change the use, allow for residential use at property located at 107 Sundial Drive. Our applicant is Mr. Kevin Butcher. He is the court receiver for this particular, court ordered receiver for this particular property. And we also have here with us Skip Howes, who is the project coordinator of this particular request. So, this request is located, this site is located in a neighborhood commercial zone, and in the table of permitted uses, a residential use in neighborhood commercial requires a conditional use permit, so that's why we're discussing this today. As you can see, this is a snapshot of our zoning map, and circled in red is 107 Sundial Drive. You can tell from this that it is surrounded to the north. We have more neighborhood commercial, and then across the highway, we have a PUD, which is Walmart. But to the east and the south, we have suburban residential. This is an aerial shot of that property. This basically shows you, we're surrounded by two street rights of way. To the north, we have Sundial Drive. To the east, we have Sun Valley Drive. And then across the highway, or to the west, we have Highway 24. Also want to note on this aerial, you can see quite well the parking that is around and as part of this site, several parking areas. To the north, we have the Gateway Business Center. There is Woodland Vision Dental Office in this particular building right here. We also have Denny's and the Eagle's Nest, all zoned, again, neighborhood commercial. To the east and the south, we have Morning Sun subdivision, Sun Division, which is zoned suburban residential. To the west, we have right next door Insurance Center, also zoned, neighborhood commercial. And then across the highway, we have Walmart in a planned unit development. This is the site plan. This actually came with the original, the original development, so Building 2 doesn't exist, neither does this parking here, but still a significant amount of parking to the right off of Sundial Drive before you come to the building, Number 1, which has been built out. This parking here as well hasn't been built out. Again, Sun Valley Drive, Sundial Drive. The whole building, Number 1, is just over 5,000 square feet. The site, main and upper levels, these two pictures to the right are pictures of the main level. This is the main family room area, which also flows into a kitchen area. And this was, this particular building served as a model home, so it has all the capabilities built into it for residential use that it would need, aside from a couple of adjustments for carbon monoxide detectors and whatnot. This is the separate entrance. There are two entrances. There's one off of the main and upper level, right here, as you can see, and right next to it, we have the garage, which has, is, would be used as part of the residential use. 627 square feet garage. And the upper and main levels are just over 31, just around or over 3,100 square feet. This is a snapshot of looking down on the main level from the upper level. The upper level has three bedrooms and a bathroom. This is the lower level. Lower level is, right now, leased. They have a tenant turnkey, construction is in there. There's no immediate need to make this residential use, but they would like to have the ability to use it for residential, should that not work out in the future. And, as you can see, there's several offices. This is their display area as you walk in. It has its own separate entrance. The lower level does. Just over 2,700 square feet on the lower level, and there is a bathroom. There's a kitchen. In the kitchen, would probably need a stove right now, just a microwave ability. So there would be some adjustments down the road, should they decide to use that level just in the kitchen. We did actually have a site visit, preliminary site inspection by our Pike's Peak Regional Inspector alongside me, and he looked at it in a preliminary fashion and found that the only thing that really needed to be done, just from that preliminary glance, was to add the carbon monoxide detectors. So when we look at a conditional use permit, we look at it in accordance with the 11 criteria laid out in Section 18.57, and there are 11 of those criteria. I'm going to go through each and just briefly tell you how we feel that it meets, complies to those criteria. Criteria number one is that it demonstrated direct need to be, to be used at this, at this location, and adequate mitigation to those, any measures that might be found that need to be taken. We did find that this complied. There is rental, leasable living space is in high demand right now, of course, with Caris Bible College. And so... Caris Bible College, and so it is in need. This is surrounded to the east and the south by suburban residential, so it would fit in with that use. The structure was built as a model home, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, so it has all those residential amenities. And the neighborhood commercial zone is a low-impact commercial zone, so even though it is zoned, neighborhood commercial, that is our lowest one, and normally, it is placed right next to residential because of that retail office space and other low-impact commercial, usually placed in neighborhood commercial. Criteria number two is that it shall not endanger the public health or welfare. The use shall not endanger the public health or welfare. And this residential use is very low-impact use. There would be two conditions that they just need to address, and one of those is that it would need to undergo a change in occupancy, meaning a building plan review for a building permit, and that would entail another certificate of occupancy for the residential use. And this would allow them to come in and do another full inspection at that time. Also, as part of our agency review, when we had this looked at, this particular permit, there was a comment from Erin Doucette of Environmental Health stating that this particular septic system was, was set in place for commercial use, and as such, it needs to be evaluated by an engineer for the use of residential. So that is a condition of this particular permit as well, that that be undertaken. Criteria number three is that it shall not substantially injure the value of any vicinity properties. Again, the residential zones to the east and the south are compatible to those residential zones and fits well into that neighborhood. Criteria number four is that it be in harmony with the area in which it's going to be located. Again, compatible zoning, model home, and it's going to be compatible with both the neighborhood commercial and suburban residential uses. Criteria number five is that it shall conform to all city plans. That would entail any growth management, transportation utilities, capital improvements, downtown redevelopment. The comprehensive plan does show this site as commercial. However, it also shows the continued residential uses to the east and the south. And so with it being compatible to those uses, it would be compatible in the future as well. The site improvements that were completed as part of the certificate of occupancy in 2006 were done to address the utility, transportation, and drainage plans, and approved with that certificate of occupancy, and again, it'll undergo a new one with the change in use. All the agencies, City Engineer, Utilities, Economic Development, all looked at this conditional use permit and had no issues, other than that sewer issue that will be addressed as a condition. Criteria number six, conforming to the standards and requirements of all city regulations. Once again, it covered most of this, model home. The site plan was approved previously. Building permit and certificate of occupancy was approved in accordance with the building codes back in 2006, and a new building permit and change in occupancy. Criteria number seven is to accommodate the onsite and offsite traffic that would be generated. There is ample parking on this site. There are 14 spaces, so I think we're good there. Residential use generates 10 average daily trips. And the local streets and US Highway 24 can easily handle the traffic. City Engineer did review this application as well. Criteria number eight, that the use would be designed, constructed, or maintained with regard to the appropriate topography, environmentally significant features, man-made hazards or natural hazards. And again, that construction in 2005 considered topography, soil, drainage, and there were no man-made hazards or streams or any environmental features that exist that it needs to be assessed to. Only that septic system, which will need to be assessed, and if there's an upgrade necessary, that is a condition that they would need to meet. Criteria number nine goes in further to the proposed use meeting adequate water supply, wastewater disposal, solid waste disposal, and air quality. And the Utilities Director did look at this particular request as well, had no issues with water. The water usage category will change when it goes from commercial to residential. The applicant is aware of that. There will be an additional monthly charge and fee that would be assessed, and they're aware of that as well. The septic system, again, will be evaluated, and the air quality for a residential home, not really, it's a very minimal issue. Solid waste disposal can be handled with weekly trash pickups. Criteria number 10 is that the use shall not unduly increase the public danger of fire, explosion, or other safety hazards. Again, under, went through the process in 2006 when it was built, making sure that those building codes and fire codes were met. And again, we'll go through that with the change of use when we do this with Pike's Peak Regional Department. And the change in occupancy will ensure that those safety measures are met for their certificate of occupancy once again. Criteria number 11, making sure that the use provides architectural design, fencing, landscaping, any buffers to areas or aesthetic enhancements that are needed. We really feel like this has been beautifully laid out from the start. There really are no exterior changes. It's got adequate parking. It's beautiful on the outside, very pleasant and inviting. Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously to this, and we're recommending approval of ordinance number 1213 with the following conditions. Applicant must apply for a change in occupancy and undergo a plan review and building permit with the City of Woodland Park and pay the related plan review and building permit fees. Approval of this change in occupancy review and permit must be obtained prior to any residential occupancy on the premises. Number two, applicant must undergo review and approval of the septic system for this change in use by an engineer, and also implement any required septic upgrades for residential use. Approval must be obtained by the Teller County Environmental Health Officer prior to any residential occupancy on these premises. Are there any questions?
Any questions for?
Yes, Carol.
Lisa, if turnkey construction moves out of the lower part of this facility, and it's then used for a residence, will it be a duplex, an apartment, or an accessory dwelling?
Just two residents, up to two units. So one in the upper and one in the lower, if it had, if it was used for a residence.
But what would they be categorized, multifamily, duplex, or would one of them be an accessory dwelling?
It would just be categorized, single-family, wouldn't it, Sally? Yes. Maybe you should address.
It would be, if they moved out and that was converted to residential, then that would be a mixed-use building, and because, or depends upon upstairs. So if upstairs is also leased, you will have two residential, and that would be considered an apartment.
So it'd be multifamily?
Multi, it would be two units apartments.
So not a duplex, but a multifamily, two-unit?
Right.
And then how, how would the taps be addressed then?
Just like any other, or multifamily commercial, it's basically one tap, two units.
Okay.
And it's one ownership, so.
Okay, that's, got it. Thanks.
A duplex would indicate multiple ownerships.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, John.
Will there likely be any change in property taxes as a result of this change?
Not a tax expert, but I would assume there would be a change in taxes, yes, because it would not be commercial. It would be considered residential use.
Partially.
It depends if one goes in. There's an ability to do one upstairs, but they could also do one downstairs, so it kind of depends. There's no intent for turnkey construction to vacate the premises there. They can stay there as long as, as they're, they're in a lease, so.
So the lower portion will be assessed, commercial, and the upper portion would be residential, is the way the assessor would look at this, as a true mixed use.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ken.
Somewhat familiar with this property. Since there's no official kitchen downstairs, if that were to be vacated by turnkey, would they have to, to make it a residence, would they have to make an official kitchen down there? Because now, there is not. There's a microwave and some other things, but I assume that adjustment would have to be made.
I believe they would not have to. If they didn't want to, they could just leave it with a microwave, or they could do some burners, just, there are single burners that you can do in apartments. They don't have to do that. They don't have to put in a stove, at this point, because.
Okay.
They're new.
Second thing, from what I understand, the upper level's now being occupied under the current commercial code, so this residential thing we're being put before us to approve tonight is for potential future use. Is that correct?
Right, correct.
Not for immediate, because there's a tenant moving in there this week.
This use would have to take place within two years, or it would expire.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess this kind of fits in, you know, it's down, you know, not in the downtown area, but you know, the things that we've been looking at where you have commercial building, and you might have a residence, and again, that kind of mixed use between commercial and, and residence.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from council? Would the applicant like to present anything?
Sure.
Come on up and talk to us, Skip. State your name and address, please.
Skip Howes, RE/MAX Performance, 300 Sunny Glen Court, property manager for this property on behalf of Kevin Butcher in Denrick. This project has given Sally and I and the planning staff an opportunity to have some pretty interesting conversations, and I think it's going to lead to some very positive things happening in this community. The, the idea of, I mean, this building was built as a residence for commercial use as a model home, so you could business office out of it, sell products, and also show the quality and craftsmanship of the builder that built it. So it's a great property from that standpoint. As a little kid growing up, I used to go visit my grandparents, and you'd go down to a little store in downtown area of Connecticut, and you'd see the store on the lower level, and Mom and Dad and the kids would live on the second and third floor. And it's a novel idea how 100 years later, these planning concepts are coming back around, and today, we're calling it mixed use. Back then, it was a status symbol if you were able to move out of the second floor of your, of your business operation and head to suburbia, rather than living in that particular case. This is a classic example, in my opinion, of what Woodland Park is about. Live, work, and play, and just do it in one house, one building. So I'm assuming that whatever happens with, with this conditional use permit, that by the time some other things happen with planning and you guys get to it, this may be a utilized use anyway. So it doesn't really matter. So whether the conditional use permit expires or not, I guess we're having a lot of fun with, with this issue and bringing it forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions you, you know, you might have, but we are looking at it from, from that standpoint of being able to meet the needs in the community both ways, either one-two, two-commercial, two-residential, one-in-one, and however that goes, and the owners will make whatever improvements are necessary to meet the needs. We did get the engineering review done on the septic, and for your benefit, it is sized as a four-bedroom home, and it can take 8.76 people, based on that. Now, I haven't figured out how we can get a 7.6 people, maybe a baby counts, don't know. Or it can take approximately 43 employees working in it. So it tells you that employees use less toilets and stuff than homeowners do, but he knows that. Other than that, I'm at your disposal, or I'll go sit down and shut up.
And I'll just make a comment. You know, when you, you made your comment at the, that night at the Main Street discussions, and we had, you know, that's kind of, it's like, well, jeez, maybe we need to look at that, and, and that's the reason, you know, we're looking at possibly changing that, and it seemed like a kind of a logical point that you made that night, so.
I get lucky every now and then.
Every now and then. Any questions for Skip?
Thank you very much.
I do have a question for Ms. Barnell.
Okay, Lisa?
What other multi-use buildings do we have in this town?
Oh goodness.
So we do have others?
They're multifamily. Are you talking about mixed use or?
Right, the example we have here.
We do have, State Farm has a residential use in part of it.
Seven Arrows Gallery.
Yes, Seven Arrows Gallery has an old apartment on top of it, right here down on the corner of Center Street and 24. There's really very few.
This is, we're pioneering here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that makes, that makes more sense, because I look at this and go, well, don't we have other multi-use buildings? And apparently, we don't. So this might start setting a trend. So yes, we definitely need to look at this carefully.
Well, and that was, looked at in the, discussed in the comprehensive plan.
I did see that, I did see that, yes.
But isn't it true now that the DDA is the only place where mixed-use buildings
are authorized?
That's a part of, they have a separate overlay district that has that written into it, but.
Otherwise, we have no mixed-use ordinance as such, do we?
Not a specific mixed-use ordinance, but you can apply our current codes, just like this, conditional use. If you wanted multiple units in a business on the upper floor, you come forward with a conditional use. So it's allowed through the conditional use process. And what we're bringing forward in the amendment to the legislation will allow for either one or two units per building, but not lots of units.
So that we don't have to go through the conditional use permit process if we, if we approve that.
Correct.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone have any comments? Hearing none, I'll close a public comment. Anything else you want to, okay? Council, any final questions? Discussions, motion?
Move to approve ordinance 1213.
With conditions?
Yeah, with conditions already stated.
With those two conditions that Lisa read into the record?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? And we'll take a vote, Cindy.
Thank you. Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And we'll move on to item 9B, another public hearing for ordinance number 1214 for a conditional use permit for an Arby's restaurant. And for that, we're going to hear from Lisa.
Thank you. This request is for applicant Mr. Andy Benning, who is the Director of Construction of US Beef Corporation Arby's. He has a project team of experts that he's coordinated with more locally, Mr. David Langley, who is the architect and also project lead, as well as Kevin, or Kenny, Robert Kenny, excuse me, of Transportation Engineer Solutions. They are here this evening, so if you have questions that you would like to ask them, you could do that following my presentation. Their request is to take the current structure located at 407 East Highway 24, an existing 25, over 2,500 square foot structure within the Community Commercial District, and use that structure as a fast-food restaurant. It will have eat-in, but it will also have a drive-through. And under the table of permitted uses, this particular drive-in use in the Community Commercial District does require a conditional use permit process, so that's why we're here. And the sections that this particular case would reference are 18.21, which is the Community Commercial District. We also analyze it to the conditional use permit 11 criteria, as well as performance permit eleven criteria, as well as performance standards G and H under Use Regulations eighteen point three-three. The site here is circled in blue. As you can see, hot pink, that is our community commercial zone. And there are, there is surrounding commercial uses. To the north, we have central business district. We also have more community commercial across Highway twenty-four and to the south of this. So east and south of here, and then we have urban residential to the west. And several area businesses and residences in this area. To the north, we have Carter Realty. We have, to the northeast, Catamount Power Sports. To the west, we have the South Fly Shop. And then to the southeast, we have the Sonic Drive-In. And then further southeast, we also have the McDonald's Drive-In. And directly to the south, we have the Red Baron Car Wash. And then also to the west, you'll see there's a significant amount of urban residential. This is an aerial map, and what this shows you is a good shot of the rights of way that surround this particular address. We have the highway off to the east, Highway twenty-four, and then to the north, we have Chester Avenue. And then we have Scott Avenue to the west. So it is surrounded by three rights of way. This is the site plan that's being proposed with a new drive-in addition. Existing eat-in is right around a thousand square foot. Additional drive-in is right around another a thousand square foot, equalling just over two thousand square feet. You will also be able to see how the traffic flow would come in. There's two, and there's three entrances. People will predominantly come in off of Chester Avenue as the traffic studies relate to this, and then also an ingress egress off of U.S. Highway twenty-four. As you can see, the driveway functions around the development, if they come in off of the site, if they come in off of Highway twenty-four and then come straight in and flows in, if they use the drive-in, but there's also significant parking to allow eat-in. There's, the existing structure is really going to remain the same. It's going to have some updates, some new gables, that addition for the drive-ins, food service, and also some signage that'll be added. There is a significant amount of parking, as you can tell. These are kind of small numbers. I do a little bit closer zooms as we move forward. But also, there is going to be four leased parking spaces to the north at Carter's Realty. There is an agreement, a parking agreement with them that has been put into place, and this will be most, this will be for employee parking, so that it frees up parking around the structure. Talk a little bit more about that parking requirement, since I've got a little bit better focus here. When you look at the parking requirement, there are actually two categories for eating and drinking places. One is for drive-in, and one is for eat-in. So the calculation was done to figure out which of the two was a greater requirement. The drive-in requirement required one space to one hundred usable square foot, which would be twenty-two parking spaces. And then it also, in addition to that, designates four lane spaces for each drive-in window. The eat-in requirement is one space per four seats. That would, at fifty-six seats, that would make it fourteen parking spaces per requirement. So the applicant has met the greater of these two requirements, which is the twenty-two parking spaces. They actually have twenty-four parking spaces. You can see, I've kind of shown you two shots here. There are twenty-four spaces, including two handicap accessible parking spaces. One of those is van accessible as required by ADA. There are also those off-site spaces at Carter's Realty, the four spaces that would be leased. There was a written parking lease agreement that has been received by the planning department. There will be yellow lines and postings that will indicate that these are reserved for parking for Arby's employees. That means a total parking provided of twenty-eight spaces. So they have met that parking requirement, and then they have five lane spaces, so whereas they were to meet four. With regard to landscaping, this did receive quite a bit of landscape, it, when it was converted a couple of years back, and that was a joint venture between the city and that owner at the time. And so the surrounding right-of-way for landscaping, we feel should be applicable, because it does blend in seamlessly with the two together and meeting that twenty-five This shows the existing conditions on the north side of that structure. These are the east side existing conditions. You'll recognize this as the Tabernash Steakhouse. That's who occupies it right now. And then to the west side here, and then the south side. Again, we look at a conditional use permit to the eleven criteria laid out in eighteen point five-seven. And the first one is that it demonstrated direct need to be used at the proposed location. It's felt that this fits the use. It meets the intent of a community commercial zone. There are other drive-ins that are across the highway and the community commercial zone, very near to this, Sonic Drive-In, McDonald's Drive-In. It's, it appeals to locals in the surrounding area, commuters that come through and commute down to the springs. It's been commercially zoned for over forty years, and the site has had previous success as a fast food drive-in food service. And all the impacts can be mitigated, we The next criteria is that it shall not endanger the public health and welfare. And the new addition will trigger that this undergo a zoning development and building permit process, which will trigger inspections. International Building Code must be met, as well as fire regulations as part of that commercial remodel building permit process. That it shall not substantially injure the value of vicinity property owners. Property to the northeast and south are also commercial and compatible in type. The few residential lots that are within close proximity have been close to this use for many years, over the last ten years. Certified appraisal was done by Michael Sperry, and he stated, "I feel this conditional use would have a minimal effect on market value on homes close to the subject, and no effect when farther than a block from this project." And the public notification process was undertaken, and we received, as of the time of this report, only one supportive comment in nature. We have since received over the last couple of days, a couple of the closer residents. Mr. Terry Coker has visited with us about traffic concerns, and we also have some feedback from other residents in that area. I believe they're, they're, some of them are here tonight to talk to you, so I'll let you hear from them as well. The proposed development and use shall be in harmony with the area. Again, it's been zoned commercially for forty years. We feel it fits the intent of a community commercial zone to provide a location for all types of general retail, office, and community service businesses that serve the needs of Woodland Park. Criteria number five being that it conformed to all city plans, including transportation, utilities, growth management, capital improvement, and downtown redevelopment. The comprehensive plan map does show this area as mixed use, which is compatible. The development lends to the comprehensive plan guiding principles to sustain economic diversity and vitality, and encourages regional businesses in the local community. Criteria number six is that it shall conform to all city regulations. These would include zoning, subdivision, utilities, building and construction, business regulations, and engineering specifications. The city reviewed and found both the rendering and the site plan to be very good use of, and incorporation of the existing mountain fill that this structure does have currently, incorporating an addition that fits well with that. The landscaping requirements, we feel, were met jointly by the city and the owner. And it is IBC compliant, fire regulations, and business licensure will all be met again under that zoning development, building permit process, when the addition for the drive-in and remodel is put into place. Criteria number seven, again, with regard to making sure the use shall accommodate onsite and offsite traffic that's generated. There was an initial trip generation letter and a follow-on traffic documentation that was reviewed and approved by our city engineer and CDOT. The city engineer initiated an additional review to the traffic documentation by URS, and URS found that the trip generation methodology developed was reasonable. CDOT did finalize their review and found the materials acceptable. They did note that if the access points are documented to create safety or operational problems, access permits will be required, and improvements may be necessary at no cost to CDOT. That condition was added. Parking requirements have been met. Then I covered that a little bit earlier. Criteria number eight talks about the appropriate regard to topography. Any surface drainage, soil potentials, natural, man-made hazards, streams, and environmentally significant features, and we feel that it meets this. It's mostly a flat topography, no significant environmental impacts are found. Criteria number nine talks about meet, the use meeting adequate water supply, wastewater disposal, solid waste disposal, protection of air quality and water drainage. And this is served with city water and sewer. It's been reviewed by our utilities department, and the commercial remodel zoning and building and development permit process will evaluate the tap capacity at that time when the fixture unit count is received as part of that permit. And the condition, there is a condition to provide updated certification and verification for the existing backflow prevention device as part of that initial review. The drainage through, is done through the curb and gutter, which is sufficient, and the air impacts will be minimal. Criteria number ten is that the use will not unduly increase the public danger to fire, explosion, or other safety hazards. And there are no significant safety hazards that we know of at this time. Commercial drive-in addition and remodel must comply with IBC and fire regulations as part of that permit process. Criteria number eleven talks about providing that architectural design scheme that fits in with that fill of that neighborhood and Woodland Park, and it may require any amenities such as fencing, or landscaping, buffering, or other aesthetic enhancements and measures as required by city council. We do feel that this existing structure has that mountain western design. It's, it's a very good representation of what we have up here in Woodland Park. And the additional gables, windows, and drive-through that are being added on to it do fit that existing structure well, and still fit that design schema. One thing I did want to point out is that when this went to Planning Commission, there were several comments that were made about the glare of headlights, and how they would mitigate that. They wanted, they required, added a condition Planning Commission did, that we work with, that staff work with the applicant and the neighbors to make sure that there was something in place to mitigate that glare of the headlights. And that has, the applicant has already worked with staff and the neighbors to mitigate, address this concern. They have, I have here, in addition to the site plan that's been received since then, the red line represents a fence that will be placed to the west of this particular site, and then wrap around where it meets into the car wash concrete building and end there. And this is a design, it's going to be staggered so that the light is deflected. And so the applicant has added that and addressed that particular concern. Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this particular conditional use permit. So we're asking for approval of ordinance number twelve fourteen, subject to the following conditions. Prior to issuance of the zoning development permit for commercial addition and remodel of the new fast food restaurant and drive-in food service, the applicant shall provide the following to the Woodland Park Planning Department. A, an existing backflowed prevention device must be verified, tested, and certification must be up to date, and results faxed to the city at the following phone number. Final signage must be approved and reviewed as a separate permanent sign ZDP by staff. And final lighting must be pre-approved by staff prior to installation and be full cutoff dark sky to reduce potential glare to residents to the west in accordance with section eighteen point three-three point zero eight zero F of the code. And number two, if the access points are documented to create safety or operational problems, access permits will be required, and improvements may be necessary at no cost to CDOT. Number three, applicant must work with staff and neighbor to address adjacent property owner concerns for glare caused by headlights in the drive-in where feasible. And as I just stated, that has been addressed. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, Ken?
Let me see, if you could go to the, one of the first slides you had, it showed the parking area.
Oh, yeah.
And the parking spots.
Okay. Do you want the overall one, or?
Yeah. I was a little confused by some of that.
Okay. It's, it's hard to see this one, that's kind of.
Yeah, right there. Those spots to the upper left, there's one, two, three, four, five, six. No, to the left.
Oh, okay.
My left, anyway.
The west.
Are those parking spots?
Yes, these are all parking spots.
So if they're parking there, is, is there room for the drive-through to work? I don't quite understand how they get through that.
Re-reviewed, this was reviewed by city staff, or city inspector, or, or city engineer, and.
So do we have a drive-through code, so to speak?
There, there are probably engineer specs that they would look at this, too.
Okay.
It's eighteen, the, the drive line is eighteen feet wide. If you zoom in a little bit, you can see that from behind where the cars are parked diagonally. And then there's another, the handicap, so the distance there is eighteen feet, which is six feet wider than normal lane of traffic.
Okay, okay. And the only other question I had was the access, obviously if somebody wants to go to the drive-in, they're going to go to the area on the north, or they're going to go around to the street and come in that way to get in the drive-in line, I guess. If you come in the other entrance, it seems rather awkward to get in the drive-in, because you're going against the grain, so to speak. So I'm not sure how, it seems like the primary access would be off of Chester to me.
And, and that's one of the things that I, I believe that the traffic engineer can, can address with you, that they studied, and they're, they're finding that that first turnoff of Chester Avenue would be utilized more.
And was that considering the future decel lane there?
It's further. There's.
Wasn't that, wasn't that the decel there? Oh, that's further out. That's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Separate.
Okay.
Got a lot going on tonight.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Yes.
Yes, John?
And maybe for Bill as well. As I was looking at the numbers for average daily trips, going to be open thirteen hours a day, like a throughput of about ninety per hour, I'm thinking forty seconds each. I'm just concerned or wondering why we wouldn't have a traffic jam there, particularly at peak time where it would be more than ninety an hour.
Probably be more appropriate for the applicant's traffic engineer to address that first.
All right. And we can do that. We can ask the applicant to come forward if they'd like to do so. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm David Langley, architect on the project. Address is three fifty West Henrietta in Woodland Park. I represent the owner. And I worked on the site plan, so I can address the parking of it and the intents of the owner. But as Sally was saying, we have Mr. Robert Kenny here this evening, who's an expert in the traffic area. And you are correct in saying that it should be looking at more of the traffic coming in on Chester, and that is in the fact, the way that it's expected to be used most heavily. Mr. Kenny can address the actual change. Mr. Kinney can address the actual change in numbers on the traffic, but it is a big effect on how this kind of facility is used as a drive-in as compared to the existing sit-down restaurant on it. And as a reminder, this isn't a neighborhood of other fast food restaurants, doesn't necessarily change the traffic on Highway 24 to any significance. It was brought up about the parking. The parking is in conformance with the City of Woodland Park standards and has been made sure that we do have function that goes through there, including enough room to bypass two vehicles, even though it's one-way in a number of the pieces of it. We do have signage laid out to help enforce correct flow onsite with the traffic. And as Lisa was pointing out, Arby's does want to be a good neighbor, and we have proposed screening to help any headlight glare to the Scott Avenue side. Anything relative to the architectural business, which is my area of expertise, do you have questions? Otherwise, I'll introduce Mr. Kinney.
I just had one question, David, about the screening. What kind of material are you proposing for that screening?
It's a cedar wood, so it's just a natural wood. The whole building is a natural wood with the log siding on it is now, so it'll go with that. Cedar will just actually just blend in with the residential neighborhood very unoffensively. And they want to do it in such a way, because it's actually very good landscaping on that site already. And so I'm proposing to put it between the trees, which range about 12 to 18 feet apart, and have kind of a broken line of fence. So it doesn't look like a prison, but is at the suggestion of city staff, make it a four feet high, which is over most of the typical headlight points, but no more than that, so that it doesn't look oppressive.
Thanks.
And John, your question, I guess we will bring up relative to traffic?
Yeah, because I haven't heard the answer yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Robert Kinney is here, who is, I have worked with in a number of other projects around Woodland Park, including some other restaurant facilities.
Welcome. Please state your name and company and address.
Robert Kinney, and I own Traffic Engineering Solutions. It's located in Black Forest, actually, at 9043 Shipman Lane, just north of Colorado Springs.
And John, do you want to restate your question on the traffic?
Yeah, just looking at the numbers that I saw on the documents, my question was, at peak times in particular, and looking at the throughput, both drive-in and the sit-down dining, I was trying to understand why there wasn't serious traffic pileup there off 24 and off Chester.
The peak hour, basically, which is really the main thing that counts, not the EDT, but the peak hour is about 50 cars coming and going. So 25 are going to be coming and 25 are going to be leaving, so you don't have a line of 50 cars coming in. It's whenever you look at trip generation rates, it counts the in and the out both. So each car is actually counted twice. And that, you know, helps quite a bit when you think about that. But the main thing is that when we do these traffic studies, we follow the state standards and the ITE standards, and they require us to create a trip generation for peak hour and also for the whole day. Now, for the whole day, there's slightly under 900 cars coming and going, but that's 450 coming and about 450 leaving. That comes out to about 34 cars coming in and 34 cars going out, and that's total of all the driveways altogether. So it's not just one driveway. That breaks down in this particular instance to where there will be about 17 or 18 cars that are going, and I always think it's east, but I guess it's technically south on 24, and turning at Chester in an hour. So that's one car for about every two to three minutes. And then there'll be another nine cars that are going the other direction, that get into the left turn lane out on the state highway, and they'll be turning left onto Chester to come in. One of the comments earlier was correct, most of the people will be using Chester. It's difficult to get to the drive-up the other way, plus most of the traffic is pass-by type traffic, traffic that's already on the highway, and they will tend to use the existing driveway. So they're going to pull into Chester and then turn left and come into that 18-foot-wide aisle and either park if they want to go in to eat, or go on around and go through the drive-up. After they go through the drive-up, they're most likely to just go back out Chester and then back out and turn right on 24 to continue southeast.
Can you show me that on the map, how they come in off Chester?
Let's use, if you could, let's just use what's on the screen, it might be helpful.
Oh, okay. I don't have a pointer. There'll be roughly 18 vehicles per hour, and this is during the peak. We always look at peak hour because total traffic throughout the whole day isn't as important. A good example of that is, there's 25 cars in the parking lot out there right now. And if all of us, that's 50 trips, so this meeting created 50 trips. If we all come and go in 10 minutes, it's a nightmare. On the other hand, if this meet, if these same 25 cars came and went throughout the whole 10 hours here to do business with the city, nobody would even notice. So what you really look at is the peak hour, the worst-case situation, not the total daily trips. During the peak hour, there'll be 18 cars turn right off of 24 and come into here. That's 80% of the total trips coming in roughly that are on 24 going this direction. And that makes up the majority of the cars. There'll be very few here, about three come in here. Almost everybody else is going to come in there. At the same time, there'll be another nine turn left and come in here. So our total amount of cars coming in through Chester is about 27 cars in one hour. So that's a little over two minutes per car. Since it only takes a few seconds to make that move, it's not like it's bumper-to-bumper traffic by any means. 27 cars in an hour is not a very high rate. To give you an idea, the traffic out there on the highway is carrying about 3,000 cars. So just to give you a relative feel for how much car that is. Most will come in here, some will park, some that want to do the drive-up will go through here. If they've done the drive-up, they're going to come back out that way. On the other hand, if they parked here or here, or even here and walked in, they may then go out and use the right out. This site is lucky in a way, in that the state normally would require a use like this to have a controlled driveway. This driveway is already controlled with the median that's out on 24. So that's a big, a safety improvement. I've worked with a lot of places where the restaurant owner would have to put in a median, and that would keep them from coming out that other driveway and trying to turn left, while other people are coming out that street and turning right, so they're crossing each other. That can't happen here because of the median, so that's a big advantage.
All right.
I don't know if I helped answer, but there's about 18 here, nine coming in here, that's 27, and then a couple coming in the other driveway.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Ken.
Just a curious note, really, do you have any numbers on how many people come in and park and how many go through the drive-through? Has Arby's developed that, or is there an industry standard, or how do they guess that?
There's industry standards, when I did this, this study, one of the problems with using averages from ITE or Institute of Transportation Engineers is that if you're looking at residential uses, there have been so many studies done, I've even done some of them and turned them into IT myself, so many studies that the range usually is from about 9.1 to about 10 and a half trips per dwelling unit. So there's so many studies, it's gotten down to pretty narrow range, so you're okay using an average. This particular type of use, because these studies are done usually voluntarily by a government agency, because they're the only ones that have the time to do it, the range is from, is about nine times from the lowest to the highest. It's a huge, huge range. And it's because it's only been done about 21 studies. So the trip generation for this during the day could have been as low as 400 or as high as 2,000. That's how wide the range is within ITE. So, you know, most people would just say, well, I'll just use the ITE average. And that's what gave the original letter of 1,150-some cars. Problem with doing an average is, it's never correct. It's either high or low. So I got a little probably too detailed on this particular study, but I tried to figure out how I can tell where Arby's is within the range of all of the other restaurants that they studied for drive-ups. And Arby's creates a little less than half as much traffic as a McDonald's. And since there's a McDonald's here in town, I thought I'd let you know that. On the other hand, it creates about twice as much traffic as a subway. So to sit there and use it, use, say, an average is what Arby's is going to do, it's really difficult. So I really basically use the industry stand, the industry, the restaurant industry standard on how much they bring in, how many millions of dollars per year. And Arby's is a little less than 1 million, McDonald's is 2.6, Chick-fil-A is about 3 and 1/2 million. So obviously, if you're doing 3 and 1/2 million dollars worth of business, you're going to create a lot more traffic than if you're doing 1 million dollars worth of business. So I use the ratio of income, basically, for these restaurants to modify what the average would be and try to make that IT number a lot more accurate. That was reviewed by CDOT, they're happy with it. I'm not sure they've seen it done that way before. Most people just use an average and throw it out as an average, but we tried to get it more fine-tuned. It was the same with the distribution, we tried to get this a lot more fine-tuned.
You did some local research of a similar restaurant in Colorado Springs.
Yes, I did. I also, because when I saw that wide range, I thought, well, this is, I mean, I could get away with just saying we're just going to use IT, but I used to review these for the City of Colorado Springs for quite a few years, and I was uncomfortable just using an average. So I actually went down to the Arby's on Garden of the Gods and did a count. That count, by the way, during that afternoon peak hour, came out lower than what my calculations were for this. So that tells me that I was pretty conservative, that the real numbers will probably be a little bit lower than what's in my report. And talking to the owner, he was talking about what numbers he sees at his drive-ups, and it would also be lower. So trying to come up with the split between, I'm sorry, it was a long-winded answer, a split between drive-up and sit-down, it varies so much by time of day, so none of the IT studies really break it out different like that. What they do is they do show a restaurant with and without a drive-up, but it's kind of phony math to just subtract the two and say that's how much the drive-up is using.
Any other questions for the applicant, or?
One more, one more parking question. What's the maximum number of employees that Arby's will have onsite at any one time?
I'm sorry, I'll have to defer.
I'm informed that the standard is eight employees runs to be the maximum, a full use for that. And with that being considered, you notice we actually exceed the parking requirements by City of Woodland Park standards.
But you set aside four, they're cut of royalty for employees, so the assumption is they're either going to carpool or they'll park somewhere else.
Or actually, the 22 required by the code here is not 22 in addition to the employees, it's 22 including the total number of people needed to operate that. I've never seen a parking standard that creates a standard and then you add the employees to it. It almost always just includes the employees. So I think what the owner has done is leased some off-street parking places to make sure that he has more than adequate for his potential customers.
I mean, just looking at this compared to other business, I mean, this is a lot of parking spots.
Yes. And again, we tend to get more and more reliant on staying in our car and doing the drive-up, unfortunately.
All right, thank you. Well, do you have a question?
Yes. The concern with all the parking questions and the traffic questions, because this is our only fast food resident, restaurant that is so close to residential. And so that's what our concern is, because if we look at all the others, there's no houses around there. So if you can address, or you have addressed, all the concerns of the residents, then I think that's great.
The one thing that there have been, there have been a lot of studies about where people like to drive in and out, and on highway commercial, which really is what this is, Arby's, McDonald's, all of those type of restaurants, they don't rely on residents, they're really relying on highway traffic. And there's been so many studies that show that 80 to 90% of typical drivers are going to take the first driveway, that they're going to take that first right, then they're going to take the first left to get back in. They're not really interested in wandering around through the rest.
The point was, it's disturbing. And we are going to have public hearing, we have a couple people signed up to speak, so that might actually answer some of the local. Maybe. Not that we've come back to.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else I could help with?
Anything else from council? Thank you. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. I do have two people scheduled who wish to speak on this. First is Ken Garland. So Ken, if you'd like to come up and state your name and address for the record and share with us what you'd like to tell us.
I'm Ken Garland. I'm 426 Spruce Street, which is right here. It's diagonal. I've been at that residence for a little over 20 years. Woodland Park resident for between 25 and 30 years. At the planning meeting on the 10th, it was kind of new experience for me, something interesting, never done before. But it was made a condition for approval for the screening, because I had a concern. The day after that meeting, Sally and Lisa were both at my house addressing that. I thought that was awesome. But, and they do have a possible solution that we addressed at that meeting at my house and looking. My concern with that is, whose property is that screen on? Property line is this dash line. Proposed screening was on this median strip, that's city property. So that concerns me a little bit. But going on to number three of the conditional use permit criteria, said that there should be no negative impact or minimize negative impact on surrounding properties. In that, it said that these few lots have become accustomed to this type of use over the past 10 years. Well, I've obviously been there over that 10 years. We've never had a drive-through in 10 years there. Haven't had a drive-in there in 10 years. We haven't had a restaurant that's been open till 11 o'clock in 10 years. I haven't come accustomed to that in 10 years. And I'm sure the people next door to me didn't either, because that house was vacant for probably six or seven years out of that 10 years. And when it was a drive-in, when it was Sonic in the 80s, Cruisers in the 90s, that was with the smaller building. When it became a sit-in restaurant, they did an addition, enlarged the building, that subtracted the parking. They lost the amount of parking when that addition was done. And parking is a concern, and I'll get into that in a few minutes. I have, I have the concerns that impact me directly as a homeowner adjacent to it, but it also has impacts into the neighborhood. And there are life safety issues that, and it's mostly traffic. And I know we have experts, but I've lived here for 20 years, I consider myself a pretty good expert on the traffic in and out of this neighborhood. Primary entrance is going to be that access off of Chester. If you're heading be north or east, however you want to look at it on 24, then you're going to make the left-hand turn onto Chester, to go to Arby's. This distance right here is about three car lengths. You've got two lanes of traffic, oncoming lanes of traffic. You're sitting here in a turn lane, you do have your own turn lane to turn left, you have to cross the crosswalk. You're going to sit there and wait for a break in traffic. These people are on the gas as soon as they leave the light up by the dinosaur museum. They're on the gas coming through there. You finally get a break in traffic, you jump across there, and boom, within three car lengths, you have to stop, analyze the situation and turn in. Just happened to my wife on her way home tonight. She was coming this way, she was turning to go in, somebody was coming out here and was unable to stay in their lane. was unable to stay in their lane. This is a sharp turn. They swung out wide, she was hung out here in the highway while this person made their turn. This really is not a good main access. The numbers that were just given about the, the additional traffic, what about the existing number of cars that are already here? The secondary access is the one here off the highway. Couple weeks ago, after the planning committee meeting, planning commission meeting, I heard it discussed out in the foyer, that this was an impossible turn. In the meantime, I've gone through with my wife, we had a Subaru Outback, three times we were unsuccessful at making this turn. If anybody here would like to stand right here where the speaker's at, right next to this car, while I drive around this corner, and I will try not, but I'll try to miss you, I promise, but you can't do it. I did some measuring, this is a twelve-foot lane of traffic on the highway here. I scaled it from the curb to the outside lane of the drive-through lane, which this is a twenty-foot wide lane here that we're squeezing, two lanes of traffic through. From twelve lanes, twelve-foot wide lane of traffic here, scaling all this off, comes to about forty-five foot. Two thousand fourteen F-150, regular cab, eight-foot mid, has a forty-seven foot wood turning radius, turning diameter, not counting the overhang of the front end. That cannot miss that turn. Seems to me about every other vehicle on the road in Woodland Parks, either a pickup or a big S U V. This access here really is no good. Now, we're down to one access over here, this access controlling residential. On the site plan, and it was caught on the picture shown earlier with the screening fence, these two arrows make it look like the driveway is here. The driveway is over here. In this location, there's a retaining wall. I can't tell you how many times over twenty years that the restaurant's been here, that somebody's driven off that retaining wall, had to have towing come get them off the retaining wall. So, this is not a clean in or out here, it's a jog going around here. Um, yeah, that's, those are, those challenges at the two primary entrances that are proposed lead to the Scott Street entrance as a big end, you know, and. It doesn't show it on this map, but we have Scott Street right here, and I'm at Spruce Street, Scott, Scott Street wise, right here at this property corner, it becomes Spruce Street. Spruce Street's a, I call it an unimproved residential, it's paved, there are no curbs and gutters. Directly across Sheridan is the entrance into the apartment complex. Basically a four-way stop, four-way intersection between Spruce Street and Stone Street, I guess, is the entrance going into Trail Creek Apartments. Those people from the apartments, they're not gonna go up and come up Spruce Street, or come up Scott Street, they're gonna come straight up Spruce Street to go to Arby's. That's got a direct impact on residential property right there. Okay, on. About parking. And parking is obviously a tight consideration on this lot, or Arby's would not have signed a lease for additional four spots. They're admitting right there that we have a concern. My concern is, here in is property line, we have four parking spots on city property. Should we even include those in the calculation for the parking? I think there would be better use for the city to have a sidewalk right here on the city property than allowing parking for Arby's, or parking for anybody. There is a major crosswalk right here on the highway that dumps onto the sidewalk this way, but there is no sidewalk coming down Chester on either side of the road. So, the pedestrians get caught up, as soon as they cross the highway, they have to go on a, into the traffic to walk down the street. Why are we giving a concession on parking when we could be doing something with the sidewalk for the public? All the parking spots on there, and this is a, I said, it's, you could use this site plan as a study for how to get ten pounds of roast beef in a two-pound sack. It's, it's very tight, very, very tight. I think these are nullified, those are nullified, I mean, how can you, that's leased property, leases are meant to be broken. How can we have, so if the lease doesn't get renewed for those four additional spots?
Can I ask you, come back to, yeah, the mic, thanks.
If that lease does not get renewed for those four additional spots, are they out of compliance? What happens at that point? If down the road, the city decides that we need that property to put in a sidewalk, are they out of compliance at that time? What happens then? Uh, snow storage, uh, I guess you have ten percent, you have to have about ten percent of storage for your square footage of parking or something like that. They've come up with eleven percent squeaking by. Uh, I don't know if it's a very realistic snow storage plan. Um. It's hard to see in this plan, this, but there's a radius here, I guess the property does a radius right here. This is a curb, this is counted as snow storage. Um, I've got a picture, there is a big gas meter in that snow storage. Now, I'm not too, I don't know too many people that plow snow that wanna push snow over a curb to begin with. Then on the other side of the curb is a big gas meter. Should we be allowing that square footage to be used as snow storage? I don't know. If we accept minimal standards, you gotta expect minimal results. The conditional use permit criteria, number one, two, and three are pretty shaky as far as being met. They're met minimally, there again, that's minimal. I don't know if we need minimal. In the criteria for conditional use permit, it states that the standards for conditional use permits are intended only as a minimum necessary for review. An application for a conditional use permit, even though meeting the minimal standards of this chapter and code may be denied if it is determined that the development and use is not in the best interest of the city. And that's what you're challenged with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And also signed up to speak is Jim White. Jim, if you'd come forth, state your name and address.
My name is Jim White, and I live at five one-three Dallas Alley, just a couple houses down from Ken. Bought the place in ninety-five, and Ken's kinda hit the nail on the head with a lot of the same issues that I have. One thing that I believe wasn't addressed at the planning meeting that I was here also with, is a concern with Ken is the speaker box, welcome to Arby's at eleven P. M. He can already hear, he expressed to the planning committee, Sonic across Highway twenty-four. Um, I don't believe that was addressed, I think that was part of what the planning commission had asked, um, obviously the lighting and what we're gonna do with the, the noise that these folks have right across the street from them, so I wanted to bring that up about the actual speaker box going. The traffic itself pretty much hit the nail on the head as well. Um, also, I'm an expert at the traffic in this area as well, probably more so than anybody that's done a study other than Ken, 'cause I've been there nineteen years myself. Prior to this all going down, right now, if we want to go out either Chester or Spruce Street and go into town, we have to go across and go left. Saturday, Sunday, impossible, can't happen. Um, also, I don't know if anybody's aware, has, has any of y'all been on these streets, any of these three streets down here? Spruce, and, uh, if you notice, they're not really streets, they're half streets. So, that's a concern. Um, I guess with this eighty percent traffic coming in this area, it's a hundred percent gonna congest it. This city is gonna have all of our accidents right there. There's insufficient amount, Ken's already kinda hit this, there's insufficient amount for, there's gonna be cars parked on twenty-four waiting to make a right to go into Chester. God forbid, I'm coming into Arby's to eat and somebody's pulling out a spot right here, 'cause now everything is stopped, including Highway twenty-four heading south. So, it is an issue with the traffic there. Big concern of mine, Mr. Sperry, Certified Residential Praise, was sent in a nice little letter with zero evidence, in my opinion, on his, uh, it's just simply, uh, his personal feeling, uh, and not trying to attack anybody, and please don't take it that way, but, um, there are relatively few single-family member homes. Let me back up for a second here. I moved here to Colorado Springs in ninety-three, late ninety-three. Actually found Woodland Park on, on a map when I was living in Hermosa Beach, California, Los Angeles. And I got here as fast as I could, if any of you guys know anything about Hermosa, it's very packed. So, I didn't move here to Woodland Park and buy a home to kinda live in those same conditions. I think I moved up here the same reason, probably the majority of us in this room are here, which is nice, peaceful, quiet little mountain town. So, I guess the good news is, is if we do move forward with this, and Arby's does go ahead and congest our area over here, the good news is, is we can always go south and we can go out, um, Spruce Street, or, uh, Sheridan. Well, we kinda got lost on that one too, because now we have seven lovely three-story buildings getting built in over there, worth a hundred and sixty-eight units, one, one-bedroom plan, three two-bedroom plans, and one, three two-bedroom plans, and one three-bedroom plan. So, when that's all said and done, we got a hundred and sixty-eight minimum people there, up to God only knows, three hundred, four hundred people, right at the end of my street. And I only have two ways to get out. I either go from my house going to twenty-four, I either go right and go down Sheridan. Well, I guess we've kinda considered that that's gonna be a nightmare, because I hear we're doing some changes on Highway twenty-four with the de-acceleration lane and possibly an acceleration lane at Sheridan, which I think maybe Mr. Schaefer might have been talking about earlier, if I'm not mistaken. Um, you know, so we're kinda trapped in our neighborhood, and I don't, I don't feel that that's right for us as homeowners. When you say there's relatively a few single-family homes there, those are our homes where we live, it's our neighborhood. Um, the history I got behind it, and I could be incorrect, but the first two homes were there in nineteen thirty-five and went on from there. Uh, my place itself was built in nineteen fifty-two, I had the city of Woodland Park contact me roughly oh-four, oh-five about making my place a historical property. Um, I do have concerns with the traffic. Ken had also said, when this apartment complex is built, when those people come home and don't wanna cook and wanna eat, they're gonna run right straight down his front yard, and it is gonna affect the traffic. So, if I have any of y'all coming to me asking to buy my home and say, well, does this apartment complex affect your traffic? Absolutely not. How about the drive-in over here? Absolutely not. No, I just go out this way, go all the way down Woodland Avenue, go down to Safeway, and then I take Highway twenty-four. Um, so those are a concern, is the traffic is definitely a concern. I, I feel that our neighborhood, the quiet little mountain town that we all bought in and wanna live in, I think it's, it's definitely gonna change. Now, I've, we have seen changes in nineteen years, obviously. Um, that is my home, I have two sons that came home from the hospital to that house, that is our home, uh, we wanna keep it that way. Traffic is a major concern for me, especially with the apartment buildings going down on the other end. I'm concerned for my friend and neighbor with the lights and the speaker box as well. And also in the planning committee, um, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he was sitting over on this side, I believe, um, that we talked about part of moving forward was, um, the safety of our children. We put Arby's in there, we're gonna have a bunch of high school students wanting to run to Arby's during the lunchtime. Uh, freshman, I believe, stays in, but we have sophomores, juniors, and seniors that are gonna be going to this place on lunches. Anybody try to cross Highway twenty-four at that little, little crosswalk right there? Doesn't work, nobody stops in the nineteen years I've been there. Never let my kids cross the street there because it is outrageous, and the traffic today is a lot worse than it was nineteen years ago. Um, so I thought something was supposed to have been addressed about that, and I don't, unless I missed it, I don't think I heard anything about that, and that is a huge concern of mine. Both my kids do go to the high school amongst with their friends, and maybe some of y'all in the room here too. What are we gonna do for their safety to cross there? Because they're going to do it. The crosswalk is literally right in this area, right here. Right now, they've got these nice little buckets with some flags. If you wanna cross the street, you pull a flag and wave the flag and pray to God, the traffic stops, it's rare, I've never seen it. Uh, so that's a big issue of mine as well, as far as the safety of our kids, um, 'cause we know that they're going to visit this Arby's if it comes in during their lunch breaks and stuff, and, and right now, that is completely unsatisfactory, in my opinion, uh, for my children and for my community's children as well. Uh, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this subject? Yes. And I would ask, as, as you come forth, for, just for brevity, if you, you know, if you, if you have new information, great, if, you know, if you're just, if it's the same thing, just indicate that.
I'll be quick. I'm Carrie Garland, Ken's wife. He was, just left out, one little thing I wanted to bring to attention. Over a third of their parking is at the back of the building, with only one entrance into it, which is at the front, which means they have to go through the traffic of the drive-through on either side to get to the front of the building. So, that means they're, you know, they're walking through traffic, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please come forth.
Eric Running, fifty-three Juniper Trail. I have a little bit different concern. When, well, so this, this is, Arby's is a franchise, alright? So, it's owned by Arby's, and then there's a franchisee. Is that correct? Is the franchisee here?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's you, and where do you live?
Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Live in Tulsa, Oklahoma, okay. So, in nineteen sixty-five, when my dad bought land up here, it was not unusual to see horses on Main Street. Paradise Dude Ranch was still going on, Woodland Park was a unique town, and that's my concern. I know those days are gone, but now I would like to see Woodland Park continue to be a unique town. The people that owned the, the businesses on Main Street lived in Woodland Park, they loved this town. The money that they made from their businesses, they spent in this town, okay? We have somebody from Tulsa, Oklahoma, he's not gonna be spending his money in Woodland Park. And Arby's, so we have, this building already houses a successful restaurant owned by somebody who lives in Woodland Park, who, and it, it's a unique restaurant, it's named after an Indian tribe that's unique to this area, I mean, what's, how is Arby's?
Well, I'm, I'm, I am gonna interrupt you maybe just a little bit here, 'cause we're, we're getting a little bit far aside. What somebody wants to do as far as a business goes, that's their decision as a property owner, as to what they wanna do, so I don't wanna go too far in, in making those judgment calls on, you know, what they're doing. That's their decision as to whether or not it's a viable business and they wanna continue it or not. I mean, and, and, and having you say that, you know, it's, it's a comment, but you know, it's, it's not really pertinent for what we're deciding here now.
Isn't your, isn't part of the chamber's job is decide who comes into Woodland Park and who doesn't?
No, absolutely not.
You have no say about that?
We have, we have zoning and, and different rules that cover those things, so the answer is no.
So, they, they meet all.
So, I don't wanna get into a debate with you, but, but, you know, make your comments and we'll move on.
They make all the requirements, then that's it? Then they can?
No, this, the, the city makes the decisions on the zoning and what kind of things are allowed, but it's, it's the business owners, the property owners, that decide whether or not they wanna open a particular business that meets that criteria.
Okay.
I mean, that's free enterprise, that's what it's all about. Anyone else? Hearing none, then I'll close the public comment. And I guess I would like to hear from staff and the applicant relative to some of the comments that we've heard.
The applicant.
Yeah. And so, if the applicant would like to come up and address some of these, I mean, we had quite a few comments and questions about parking and, and entrances and turns and traffic flow and, and all of that, um, I think we'd like to hear on, on that. Yep.
I'll address as many as I can. There's no doubt that there are some large vehicle drivers that will not be able to turn off of the right-in, right-out and get to the drive-up. That's true. A good friend of mine lives here, has an extended cab pickup. It's a huge thing, and there's very few places in town that he doesn't already know where he can get to and where he can't get to. So there's a lot of places he can't just whip into. He finds a different way in. In this particular case, I'm pretty confident that the great majority of the people are going to be turning onto the city street first and then into the parking lot. It really doesn't make sense, if you're driving a large vehicle, to try to turn in and then make another sharp right to get to the drive-up. For one thing, it would be almost impossible to get to the menu doing that, even in a small car.
But let me ask a question on that. If you're on a street and you're not familiar with what that setup is, and you turn in there, how would you know what situation you're getting into?
The proposal on the site plan includes a rather obvious sign. Right at this, at this location, right here, facing those people, that says, "Drive-up" is over here in this driveway, not that driveway. So the sign right here that says, "Drive-up window."
So I think if you're a stranger... Let me go ahead and ask a question now.
Okay.
Just taking that as an example, but let's say that you don't see that sign, and you come and you turn right to come in there, and the drawing that shows here shows that's a one-way headed, you know, next to the drive-thru. So what if you turn into the restaurant there and you can't make that turn, that there's cars in the drive-thru? Where does that car go?
Well, I can't answer that, other than the fact that I'm assuming that before you make the turn, you will be able to look in the driveway and see that there's a car sitting there blocking your way in. So I would guess that person would drive right on past and probably go to the next opportunity to turn.
Was there any consideration for making that one-way only at that ingress egress, making it just one-way out onto Highway 24?
If it were one-way out, there's a total of 26 parking places onsite. Nineteen of them, the great majority, are accessible by coming in here. There are, however, seven parking places, these three and these four, that you do need to come in this driveway. So you would not be able to get to those seven, unless you came in the other way and then went all the way around and went past the drive-up, which you could do, I assume, but that's kind of against human nature. Most people are going to take the first opportunity, which is the Chester Street, and then the studies have shown us between 10% and 20% of the people will go to the second driveway if they're strangers and they've never been there before.
Well, let me ask it a different way, then. Was there any consideration for making that a one-way out onto Highway 24 only, knowing that those parking spaces at the top could only be accessed if you circled completely around the restaurant?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we certainly, I wasn't asked to look at that. I'd be certain glad to look at that, but I wasn't asked by the applicant to look at making that one-way out only.
Okay.
To solve that, couldn't you put a no-right-hand turn on that highway right there?
It basically does the same thing. But again, I think that, I don't have all the vehicle turning charts in my head, but if an F-150 comes out, I think it was one or two feet short of being able to make that, that means there's an awful lot of vehicles. Like, my 4Runner turns a lot sharper than an F-150. I could make it with a 4Runner. So I mean, I don't know if you would want to prohibit all people from turning there or if you would just want to prohibit large vehicles. My, and I'm not trying to be critical, I'm just saying that most people who drive those really big pickups are really well aware of the fact that they take a huge area, and I think they're looking pretty closely before they pull into a driveway if they think they can make it or not. But it would be possible, if it became a problem, to put up a no-right-turn sign. That would be up to CDOT.
We're going to go ahead and let you go, you know, and give your rebuttal to what we'd heard from the public.
The comments about using the other streets in the neighborhood, I went in, I pulled in here tonight, 6:30, made a left turn, pulled in, went into the driveway, drove around the building a few times, came back out, pulled out, and then drove over here to come to this meeting. Admittedly, this is not a Saturday in the middle of the summer, or a Sunday in the middle of the summer, when I know it's a lot busier, because I come up here a lot also, but, you know, there was no problem being able to make those moves or being able to make any of those turns. I believe that people who live here will know about the other streets that go through the residential areas, but I don't believe that, again, the great majority, studies have shown 80% to 90% of the customers for Arby's are going to be pass-by traffic. They're going to be Highway 24 traffic, not Woodland Park traffic. Those people, it's unlikely they're going to know about all the little backways that you can get bound to another signal or get someplace else by going through the residential area. I understand the concern of people who live in the area, but like I said, every one of these that I've studied before has shown that the great majority is highway-related. They're pulling off the highway, taking the first driveway, pulling back out onto the highway and leaving. So I can't make everybody feel good about that, because there are some vehicles that won't do that, but I can just tell you that, based on all the studies that I've done, that's the great majority of the traffic.
Anything else that you want to...
No, I was trying to make some notes. There was a talk about the turning move. There was talk about access to the parking places, and I think that was, and then the comments about using the residential streets instead of the highway or instead of using Chester. I think that was mainly, yeah, I can't really speak to any of the other concerns. I wasn't around here when it was a drive-up before, or it was a drive-in restaurant, so I have no idea what the traffic was like at that time.
I think council's going to have a couple more questions. Maybe, David, if you could come back up and maybe also Lisa, and together you can answer some of the questions that some of us might have. So I'll turn to council first. I have a few, maybe you'll cover them. You got one, Gary?
Yeah, I think so. I think you brought up a good point about the school kids, you know. Arby's used to be where Monja Monja is right now, so that wasn't a problem, obviously, at that time, but you're right, the kids will go to, assuming Arby's doesn't charge a phenomenal amount on their sandwiches, you're going to get a lot of high school traffic over there, and it's, I think it's juniors, seniors have off-campus privileges. But you're right, that road crossing is a big problem for those kids, and I was wondering, Lisa, if there's any way to mitigate that through a crosswalk or something like that. That's a big concern that I have.
Well, city engineer did review this along with CDOT. It wasn't something that came up out of that review. So, and I know that it was mentioned that this was something that came up during planning commission. There were comments about that, but planning commission's added condition only addressed the glare of the highlight, the headlights, not the noise of the speaker or the pedestrians. So it was not conditioned.
So I mean, could we consider that?
What should we be talking about? The speaker or the crosswalk?
No, crosswalk. I'm going to stay on the crosswalk. That's Gary's question.
Well, I'd just offer on the crosswalk, the traffic study looks at the vehicle traffic, doesn't look at pedestrian traffic. David and I, in his tenure, my tenure, have worked with that crosswalk. It's really underutilized right now. There's just not much use there, of course, probably because of the conditions. So the mitigation work that we have done there is to put the orange flags up. Even our main crosswalk down at Center Street does not have the pedestrian traffic to justify any kind of signal. It was with a lot of negotiation with CDOT that we got the flashing rectangular beacon that's there today, that, and still, the traffic, or the pedestrian traffic is very limited. I would offer the best, what we can do is continue to monitor this crosswalk and work with CDOT to see if issues do develop, but there's not a lot of alternatives to mitigate that crosswalk. You know, pedestrian signals and things like that along 24, that's problematic. That's difficult to do, but I would say we continue to monitor it, and I'm not here to say we want to have any kind of accident or issues there, but that's what we can do, unless you want to condition otherwise, but we'll continue to monitor and see what the pedestrian traffic is there.
And I would say that, you know, I think you're going to see a change in pedestrian traffic, as, for example, up at Center, where when Woodland Station's developed and there's more things across the street and people going across, that's what is going to become more and more of an issue there. I wouldn't expect right now that there would be very many people walking across 24 down where the restaurant is now, but I think what you're hearing from a council member is that with students going to lunch and it being an Arby's, you know, not a sit-down restaurant, that the number of people crossing that street could increase.
Exactly, and that's what we acknowledge, and we'll need to continue to watch that, monitor it.
What's the speed limit there, Bill?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five? Okay. Would it make any difference if it were 30?
No.
Minimum.
Okay.
Twenty-five.
It's an incremental reduction in the speed, of course. It gives people a chance to react. You know, we're struggling right now, trying to get downtown to 25, and I think if we're successful with that, then over some time, we'll be able to push the speed limit to 30 in that area and then as, and keep pushing the slower speeds to the perimeters of town. But CDOT's not going to do anything on that highway without some numbers. They're not proactive, they're reactive in their philosophy.
Excuse me, are we done with questions? Can we continue to ask questions or are we done?
No, you're done. You're done. Yep.
There is an existing crosswalk there, you know, as you brought up. There is a crosswalk there.
Don't even let the kids see it.
Okay.
It's easy.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't put it there. The state put it there because it was a, it was a place that people crossed to get to school. So it was intended to be a school crosswalk, and that's why when we, when we got the flashing at Center, we moved the buckets and the flags there, because we recognize that it's not an ideal situation either. But the state is not going, we can talk to them and we can ask them, but until they see some proven numbers, they're not going to invest money in that spot. I'm sorry that that's the way they approach things.
I have a couple of questions. Lisa?
Yes.
In looking at the layout, as people turn off of Chester and come in, the residents, he made a comment about that the parking spaces, I guess they're numbered...
They are, yeah.
Four, five, six, and seven at the top there. Are those, are some of those on city property? Does that, those parking spaces?
The property, the property, yes, part of those are actually. There's a dotted line there that shows, let me just kind of...
Yeah, I've got to zoom in.
Run my cursor over here. Here are the property lines.
This is an issue. I think Sally's got the history on it. In that whole area with some of the surveying that was done in some of the subdivision in the, years, decades ago, there was a 60-foot bust in a bunch of the surveying. Same thing occurs down in Sheridan, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later on this evening. So in that area, the roads were erroneously placed, or the property lines were erroneously placed. You pick the way you want to look at it, but that's, that's what's happened over the years. So yes, the noses of that, those parking, that's on city property in the right-of-way.
And it's not, it is within our code to allow for parking to be in the right-of-way. So this is not that unusual. We've done it, in fact, just down the street with the Keller Williams Building has parking on the street, which is partially on their property and partially in the right-of-way.
And then the other question, a comment about the fence that would be put up to block the headlights, because that does show that that would be on the city property also.
That's true, and that is also typical, is to allow for landscaping or enhancements or improvements, aesthetics, to be in the right-of-way, and we oftentimes will have the owner sign a letter of encroachment and agreement, so that is covered with that agreement.
Who maintains it?
They will maintain it. That's part of the agreement. It's part of their landscaping requirement or mitigation. So it's handled very easily.
And then for the parking spaces that are down towards the bottom in the back, that would be 15 through 22, is there any kind of an issue, and I'm just trying to think of different fast-food restaurants and things, where parking is back in an area like that for the pedestrians walking against the traffic to get into the restaurant?
McDonald's is very much like that. If you think about the parking that's just above the sidewalk, when people get out of their cars, they walk across the entrance to the drive-thru.
Yeah, but I was thinking more about this number of spaces that are at the very back.
Yeah, I would, I think there's even more along the fence line there.
Yeah. And those typically will be the last ones filled by customers, so they'll, most of the customers will park up front to begin with.
If they come in off of Chester. And then one other, the question about the speaker barker, or comment about speaker boxes and noise and things like that, disturbing neighborhood, any, I'd like to hear from the applicant relative to that.
I'm not an acoustic specialist, but I have had a lot of reason to pay attention to how sound works, from doing high-end custom residences up the hill overlooking Highway 24 to the interior environment of Our Lady of the Woods under construction church, very sensitive environment. Observation is that sound travels in a distance as is projected, and it continues to travel until something interrupts it. When I'm looking at a house up the hill, when we're standing on the site, very noisy, hearing everything on 24, as soon as you put a deck, anything that breaks up that sound, it is not gone, but it's very much minimalized. In this case, the speaker box is facing, is on the opposite side from the residential area on the, on the restaurant building, so it'd be projecting the other way, and the building itself buffering it from the residential. Bottom line is that the residents there will continue to hear more of the sonic speakers than on this speaker. It would be a subject of a noise ordinance issue if it would continue to be a problem before they set the volume on that speaker. So that would come into whatever level of code enforcement that is available to the city and its constituents on controlling volume. That would have to be in comparison with the rest of the environment. Otherwise, I could just now reinforce that the onsite parking does exceed, onsite, without the leased spaces, exceeds the city requirements, and a reminder that the situation with how the entrances, exit sets, the turning radiuses in the area of parking are all existing conditions, and that's with a food service restaurant, and of course, it is more complicated with the, with this. If, as a resident, if I had a way of controlling Highway 24 traffic and safety, I would join right in with these guys trying to lower the speed limit, increase the safety of the sidewalk. However, CDOT owns these streets there, so continue to appeal by our highly qualified staff here.
If I could...
Okay, David.
Dave?
Yes.
I would ask that you work with the Arby's folks. There's got to be a way to put a vein or a panel next to the speaker box that's perpendicular to the box that would prevent any noise from traveling toward the residential area. That's got to be a simple fix.
Focuses the sounds such as...
Absolutely.
Such as your bullhorn, loud speakers, very loud in front of it, but not so loud beside it.
Correct.
So I'm getting a nod from our client here, who is saying that, yes, we would work with that, and I'm guessing it's been done before. So I think that's very reasonable.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Gary?
As many for Sally. You have the, I guess, the knowledge from being here the longest, I guess. Didn't that used to be a cruisers?
Yes.
Okay. Now, to me, that seems to be awfully similar to a, to a drive-in Arby's.
In fact, there's probably more noise with the Cruisers because it's just like Sonic. And so I'm not thinking, thinking we're not doing anything really new here because that Cruisers, what was the traffic situation back then with Cruisers and all that stuff and lighting and noise mitigation and traffic flow and all that stuff? Because it's pretty much the similar thing.
Yeah, it was also a Sonic, I understand, at one time, and then transferred to the Cruisers. You know, we weren't involved in a traffic study, so I don't have detailed answers to your questions for a comparison, but it was a similar drive-in type use with the speaker systems, but it did not have a drive-up.
And I don't think it had a sit-down component, you know, like this. This has both the drive-through and the sit-down.
The biggest factor is the drive-through, I would think.
It is bigger. This is bigger, no doubt, no doubt. And since I have the microphone, I did want to answer one question of Ken's. He asked about sidewalks, and it's important to note that there is a sidewalk system that was started to the west of here on Chester. It's on the north side of the street. So if we were to continue that sidewalk system, it would connect on the north side.
Yes, Carol.
I'm not even sure who would take the question. Is it possible at all that this not be a drive-up and only be a sit-down Arby's or a drive-through? No, here he comes.
I'm Andy Binning. I live in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and with USB Corporation. And no, we'd have to have the drive-through component.
Thanks.
To make it financially viable?
To make it financially viable.
Had to ask.
Sure. Other questions from council?
Sure. Any other questions of me? No problem.
Well, yes, I do. I'm assuming that you've set up other Arby's in other parts of the country.
Yes.
And really, the challenge, aside from those that are the most obvious, you know, drive-through glare and sound, the parking does seem to be an issue and the traffic flow. How does that compare to other projects you've done?
Well, this is a tight site. We've had tighter, believe me, but, you know, twelve-foot drive-lanes work, and this, this at least has eighteen-foot drive-lanes, which is a plus. I mean, that helps for circulation around the building.
How would you feel about making that Easternmost exit one-way only?
I've seen that done before, and that actually creates more problems because people are still going to try to turn right in there, and they don't have a way to get in there, and that actually causes more congestion than just trying to make the swing.
Okay, thanks.
That's one of the reasons why I suggested a right-hand, no right-hand turn on that thing, so it seemed to be a way to mitigate that.
Other questions for applicant or the staff or council? Okay, thank you. Let's talk a little bit, counsel, what you're thinking on this, and what are the issues? I mean, yes, Ken?
I'm just not comfortable with the traffic issue, the drive-through and the parking spaces. I mean, all these different things that have been talked about. It just looks very, very tight to me, and I sympathize with the traffic problem this will probably create and the crosswalk issues. I really am concerned about the way it's laid out, and I don't know if there's another way to do it, but I'd like somebody to look at it.
If we did as, if we make a recommendation, as Gary's already suggested, that there is a no right-hand turn off of 24 at that Easternmost exit, is that our call, or do we have to ask DOT to do that?
We would absolutely have to work with the state on that, absolutely. I just want you, as you're thinking about that possibility, I think as people approach, if they miss the Chester turn, their next reaction is going to be to want to make the turn into that other driveway. If you make it one way, then people that are leaving are going to be more, they're going to scoot to the center of that space instead of staying to the right. And even if there's a sign there that says no right turn, that's an unusual sign on the highway, and people are going to slow down, and they're going to have to try to figure out, is that for there or is it for the business that's next to it? What does that mean? And that may cause more trouble than the vehicle that's going to enter that area to make that sharp turn. I don't know what that's going to look like, but I think you need to think about both sides of that. Are you introducing additional hazards by making it only a right turn out? And if I could, Mr. Matthews, you say, and Ms. Harvey, you both have said you've got concerns about the parking. I'm unclear as to what the concern is that this group is going to be able to address and answer. If you could flesh that out for us.
I don't know that they can. My concern is traffic coming into that Easternmost entrance, and coming into the drive-through traffic, and maybe it's not as congested there as it appears to be.
You know, a similar, the similar scenario exists at McDonald's. If you come off of Baldwin into there, you almost point straight at the drive-through, and they want you to go around and then come back through. I think there's a little more space horizontally, but it's the same scenario. So if you can help us understand what your concerns are about parking...
It's not parking per se, it's that traffic that would come straight into a potential line of drive-through traffic. They, by ordinance, meet, and by code, meet the parking requirements. That's a given. I'm just concerned about traffic trying to make that right-hand turn and running smack-dab into drive-through traffic. Ken?
Well, I would also chime in on that. The entrance on the north side, and they come off the highway, they come down there a very short distance and quickly turn in, and there's cars backing out possibly right in front of them. I mean, there's no leeway. I mean, even at Sonic, you have that situation with cars driving behind that, but there's plenty of room before they get there. There's not much room at all. They pull in there, that first car or second car's pulling out, they're going to run right into them. I just, I don't, I'm not a traffic person, so I can't say, you know, what the better solution is. That's not my job, but I just am concerned about that in particular. And I also am concerned about that southern entrance that we've been talking about.
John, you have a look on your face.
Well, I think the applicants, you know, have a lot of experience with traffic and with making money at Arby's. And if they in fact say this will work in spite of our non-traffic expert reservations, myself included, I think that carries a lot of weight. It does with me. So from that perspective, and I shouldn't say aloud, but I love Arby's. Matter of fact, my family, as I have our time driving by one. But, so I understand the reservations. I have some of them, but on the other hand, they are not trying to build an Arby's here that's not going to be a moneymaker for them. And when they say, well, we've seen this, we've seen tighter Arby's, this'll work.
And I'll just, you know, weigh in that, I mean, all of those are, it's just, again, a tightness, but I think those lane sizes, especially, you know, on the iPad, I can blow that up and look at it a little bit better than you can seeing it here. This whole thing with students and things crossing Highway 24 is going to be an issue. It's going to be an issue. I mean, I don't know how we address that, you know, in advance, but that's going to be a problem.
But that, I don't think there's any reason to disapprove anything because of that. We need to look at it.
And watch it.
And watch it.
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor?
We need to own the highway.
Yes, no?
Yeah.
I agree, we need to look into the traffic situation, especially with Trail Ridge going in. We're going to have students walking across that street, but that's not the issue with Arby's here, okay? We definitely are looking into the situation with the traffic, so that is a big concern of everyone up here. So don't think we're not concerned about it. And I think that's, that's what we're all trying to say, is that we are very concerned about the traffic, we are very concerned about the crosswalk, we're very concerned about the light over at McDonald's, and we're trying to do something about it. Okay, but that doesn't mean that the Arby's can't go in there. Okay? Is that...
Yes, Bill.
Yeah, my very first analysis, when we first got this, I've got the original email, had all of these same traffic concerns, the ones that the residents have brought up, you've brought up. I had those various concerns, and we have gone through an iterative process with the applicant's traffic engineer. I'm not a traffic guy, so I've referred those to our on-call consultant who has reviewed their multiple iterations of analysis, and we've even had CDOT look at it because we wanted to make sure they were comfortable with it. So I can tell you that the traffic has been looked at from an analytical and quantitative point of view, which is what we're charged to look at, and it meets those standards and criteria. There's a lot of subjective parts here that we can't quantify and we can't do, but they have done a lot of work based on our concerns because I have those same concerns right from the beginning. But we have looked at it, and we've had it checked by others who are specialists in this field. But people on the road driving cars, we all know, do some pretty wild and strange things, and we can't, you know, foresee and mitigate every condition. But I can assure you, your staff has had these very same concerns and worked with the applicant to try to address those in a quantitative form.
Okay. Counsel? Any further deliberation?
I'm happy with this.
If not, then we'll entertain a motion if you so desire.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance.
Number 1215.
1215? Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. With the conditions as presented in the...
I'll second it.
I have a motion to second to approve ordinance number 1214 for conditional use for fifth for the Arby's restaurant, and including the conditions that were presented as part of the presentation from staff this evening. Any further deliberation, discussion?
Well, I think we're just going to have to look at this traffic stuff as this goes on, as well as the crosswalk for the high school kids. I don't think we can drop that, but I think we need to seriously look at that as this thing progresses.
Okay. Then we'll take a vote, Cindy.
Thank you. Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
No.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five-one.
Thanks, everyone that came and presented, and your concerns are, we recognize, and we'll be trying to keep an eye on all of that. Moving on to item 9C, ordinance number 1212 concerning a public improvement easement, and for that, we turn to Sally.
Thank you very much. I'll pull up my PowerPoint to get started here. I would like to take both agenda items, nine, let's see. We have nine C and 10A together because they are related. And, there we go. Okay, so we are going to be discussing both a easement for public improvements that People's National Bank is granting to the city for improvements that will include a right-turn lane on the eastbound lane at Sheridan Avenue and a development agreement associated with that. First slide is a bird's-eye view of this area that we'll be discussing. This is the Baldwin intersection of Highway 24 with a traffic signal. This is People's National Bank adjacent just north of Sheridan Avenue, and the right-turn lane will be 110 feet long in this area that is being proposed. This right-turn lane was triggered as a result of the Trail Ridge Apartments. It was required by CDOT. Specifically, there were 25 right turns at peak hour onto Sheridan that triggered the need for this improvement. This is a street view of Highway 24 looking eastbound, just north of the traffic signal, and you can see the gradient going down toward Sheridan Avenue, the adjacent sidewalk, which is actually built on private property. And we already have an easement in place for this sidewalk from Peoples or the previous owners, the DeVos, that was established in 2003 when these improvements were done for the sidewalk and the drainage. Now moving to, I'm standing right where the light pole, traffic pole is, and the taper will begin in this general area. The lane will be 11 feet wide. The red line represents a retaining wall that will be built right adjacent to the sidewalk in order to place this right-turn lane into this section to make it down toward Sheridan Avenue. There's also improvements in terms of the drainage, so a box culvert inlet that currently is right on the edge of the highway will need to be moved over, as well as some realignment of the sidewalks for pedestrian ADA access. This is a photo now looking north of that intersection that shows approximately where the new retaining wall will be. The 11-foot right-turn width lane will actually be on the highway property within the right-of-way. The reason we need the easement is both for the construction of the retaining wall and the location of the retaining wall, but also the access or the temporary easement for Along with those improvements, there'll be some improvements on Sheridan Avenue that will help with this alignment. This is Sheridan looking toward the east. We will repair, have the sidewalk repaired to meet ADA requirements, and the alignment will flow better. Right now, this is an acute angle, it's less than a 90-degree angle, so it's a fairly sharp turn. Those improvements will all help in conjunction with the right-turn lane. This is the exhibit that goes with the easement, and as I mentioned earlier, this is overlaying an existing easement that was put in place in 2003 for drainage and for sidewalk. Now it will be for the public improvements. It also includes a portion in front, in front of Peoples along Sheridan. This cleans up an encroachment of the road that was built on their property, so it's a good cleanup as well. In your packets, I shared with you the proposed improvements. This was a general plan that initially came into the office. We now have construction drawings, a full set of construction drawings, but this plan showed not only a planned view, but also the cross-section of the retaining wall with the guard rail on top, new curb and gutter, and that 11-foot lane. This is a sheet from the set of drawings that shows from a planned view the taper and then the lane, turn lane, the curvature around the corner, and then the improvements that will be in front of People's Bank, along with new improvements to drainage on this corner... corner and the crosswalk. This is a system improvement that has regional significance. We know that all of us use Highway 24, and it joins a collector's street. So this is an important improvement to the highway system. The developer is responsible for approximately 25% of the funds for this. These are fees, transportation capital fees, plus additional dollars. The transportation capital fees for Trail Ridge is approximately $54,000. The developer's share here is $63,000. The city's share with previously collected transportation capital fees is $177,000. The total cost for the turn lane is $241,000. And then the city is also going to be contributing $86,000 toward the improvements to Sheridan Avenue, also from fees collected previously with the transportation capital fees.
Back up on that one. $86,000 for what?
The improvements along Sheridan Avenue.
And all of those funds are from the transportation capital fees that have been assessed, not from ...
They've been collected over time.
Right.
By the adjoining property developments and significant improvements. Homes also pay into this account. Kelly talked about that at our last meeting.
Yeah, we'll probably come back to that for a little more discussion.
Lastly, I wanted to just summarize the benefits for ordinance 1212 for establishing the easement. This allows for the improvements to occur. It cleans up the Sheridan Avenue road encroachment that is existing. With the development agreement, these improvements to the right-turn lane increases safety and efficiency for the traveling public. The construction responsibilities are detailed in this agreement. It is a turnkey project with which the developer is responsible for all of the oversight regarding this project and the construction. The financial obligations are laid out in the agreement as well. And should there ever be, should there be any overage, then a ratio of 1/3 to 2/3 is established for the overage. So with that, staff would recommend approval of both ordinance 1212, establishing the permanent and the temporary easement for construction, granting that to the city from Peoples Bank. And then also move to approve the development agreement between the city and Woodland Park Associates LLC to complete the construction of the eastbound right-turn lane and Sheridan Avenue improvements. What questions do you have?
Questions for Sally? Yes, John.
The retaining wall?
Yes.
What material will that be?
The designer and developer is here this evening, and he'll be able to give you the details on the retaining wall.
Thank you, Sally. Eric Smith, 525 Pembroke Drive, here tonight on behalf of Woodland Park Associates LLC. Specifically, John, with regard to your question on the retaining wall, it'll be a Keystone product, split-faced block. It's not the large blocks that you see at Walmart, for instance. Those are actually cheaper to use. But the problem is with the way that this wall will kind of step up and then step back down, using large blocks like that doesn't really work. I'd like to give a special, and this ties in as it relates to Peoples Bank. We've spent a great deal of time working with Peoples Bank, and we actually allowed them to pick, we gave them several different types of options, and we said, which one do you want us to use? And so they actually picked the block, they picked the color. But it'll be, it's about an eight-inch by 12-inch by 16-inch type block that's split-faced.
Thank you.
I think one of the other things I'd like to note, I'm happy to answer any questions, but speaking on behalf of the developer, one of the things, when I approached David and we chatted about this, you know, we're more than happy, we're contributing six cars turning right here, based on the traffic study. We are right at the threshold of 25 vehicles. We generate roughly the same amount of trips as the previous applicant discussed, the Arby's. So when we prepared our traffic study, it went to CDOT, it went to URS, who's the city's traffic engineer, and they came back and said, well, you tripped the threshold of 25 vehicles. We're right at the threshold of 25 vehicles, based on existing traffic and the additional traffic that we're going to add. Peoples Bank sits right on the corner. It obviously is a very heavy traffic generator, being right at the corner. Woodland Exchange, obviously, is right next to Peoples Bank. It utilizes this intersection quite a bit as well. So, you know, my feeling is, from a fairness perspective, the city collects transportation impact fees from all different developments. For this type of purpose, we're more than happy. In fact, we're going to pay more than what's required for our development fees, about $10,000 more in working with the city. And yeah, this is a very expensive turn lane. There's no two ways about it. And I fought it tooth and nail as much as I could and basically was told, no, this is what's going to happen. So the improvements along Sheridan, the reason for those is we actually have to go in and rebuild Sheridan. It's not a matter of just going in and resurfacing Sheridan. We have to rebuild all of Sheridan from, what is it, Scott, up to the intersection. The reason is, is that the ramps, that cross the pedestrian ramps have to, the slope of the street going up where the ramps cross Sheridan has to be at 2% slope. Well, if you saw that picture that Sally took, it really ramps up. And so I asked Bill, and I said, well, we can build something that's substandard and put it in the way it is today, or, you know, should we go ahead and fix the problem? So Bill suggested we went ahead and fixed the problem. And so that's why the improvements along Sheridan are being done.
I have questions for staff, not for Eric. This has been kind of a discovery learning process for me personally. Unbeknownst to me, and at my own fault, I did not note that in the general fund expenditures for 2014, we approved as a council the expenditure of $170,000 for the right-hand, right-turn lane, eastbound turn lane onto Sheridan. So that has been agreed to. I wish I had understood that, and lesson learned for next year's budget consideration. You think Bob Carlson's careful about the budget? Guess what? I'm going to be right behind him next year. So $170,000 has already been set aside, and I'm assuming that is from the transportation capital fee fund.
That's correct.
And at this point in time, I think all of you got a copy of an ordinance that was passed in 1999, ordinance number 815, that establishes that transportation capital fee and how it may be used. And I'll come back to that later. Given that that amount of money, $170,000, has been dedicated to this, what is the total amount in that fee at this time? In that fund?
With this expenditure and the other work on Sheridan, there would be a residual of, I need to back, well, there's a residual of about $23,000 that's still in the general fund. Here's what happened. And there's a huge history associated with the establishment of the transportation capital fees and the philosophy on why it was generated. I think it might be beneficial to review that with the council. In the early 90s, then-city manager knew that we were going to be making lots of improvements on Highway 24. And in order to compete effectively with other regional demands within this region through the PPA CG and the CDOT process, it was his philosophy to provide an overmatch of funding for those federal grants. There's a minimum 20% city match to go with an 80% federal match to typically get highway projects done. His approach was to get that up to 30% or 40% of the local match to make our projects more competitive. That's what allowed us to get all of Highway 24 done in the 1995 to 2005 time period. What that did was it really overtaxed, if you will, the 410 Fund, the one-cent fund, to the detriment of our local streets. That was a decision that he made to get the Highway 24 corridor done. He realized in about 1995, 1996, that the next major corridor of improvement that was going to occur was going to be the Highway 67 corridor. And he also knew that there was going to be a huge need for local street improvements. So in 1997, when I came here as the Public Works Director, he tasked me with determining a transportation capital fee process that would generate a pot of money that could be used for the matching funds to federal dollars. So we hired URS, our consulting engineers at the time, to do two things along the Highway 67 corridor. One was to take our master plan, our zoning, and determine what was going to be the traffic that would be generated along the Highway 67 corridor 30 years from now. What's going to be the build-out and therefore, as a consequence, what would be the traffic that would be generated? So that's one number you need to keep in mind. What's the traffic that's going to be generated? The second thing is, what were the system improvements that were going to be needed to handle that traffic? Where did the highway need to go to four lanes? Where could it remain two lanes? So URS determined what the highway configuration would be. And so there was a construction estimate that was determined for that stretch of Highway 67 from 24, actually all the way to BBB Ranch Road or out that way. So now you've got a total number of traffics, total number of traffics, total number of cars, and you've got a dollar amount. And you can divide the two, and you can get a cost per trip, if you will. You heard the traffic engineer speak of that earlier. Well, that cost per trip was, came down to about $100. So by that time, that city manager was gone. Cindy was acting as the city manager. I was still the Public Works Director. We took us to the public and threw work sessions. The public came and said, here's what we think we're hearing you say, is you want to create, you want to collect fees from us when we build a house or when we build a commercial enterprise. You're going to collect those fees so that you can leverage them against other dollars so that we, as the developer or the single-family home builder, don't have to pay the full price for traffic improvements that are necessary. That discussion was important for you to understand that the philosophy was to collect a pot of money that could be leveraged against other dollars so that the building, to use Sally's term, that triggered the improvements didn't have to accept the full responsibility for making those improvements. It's the straw that breaks the camel's back. There's a whole bunch of straws that happen before that last one goes in. And the last one that goes in shouldn't be blamed for breaking the camel's back. It's the collection of all of them. So that's the philosophy on how this ordinance was created. I will tell you that with every ordinance, there are nuances and procedures that are applied to make the thing work. And as time progressed, we realized there were nuances to this that weren't fully anticipated within the ordinance. Every project is unique. The Walmart store was unique. Stone Ridge Development was unique. Sheridan Avenue was unique. So now to get to the point about the money that's left in the fund. When the funds started being collected, they went into the general fund. That was, I can't explain, I don't know why. I don't know why they didn't go into a designated pot of money. We don't create pots. We have pooled cash, if you will. But the money went into the general fund as opposed to the 410 Fund. So that went through the late 90s and all of the 2000s. And in 2000 or 2000, I'm sorry, 2010 or so, as I was reviewing the reserve and really honing in on how we were going to calculate the reserve, it came to my attention that the transportation capital fees had been going into the general fund, not into the 410. We changed that. Now the transportation capital fees go into the 410 Fund. So what we've done over the years is we've spent down the transportation capital fees that were in the general fund on those projects that were eligible for transportation capital fees. So there's about $23,000 left in the general fund from transportation capital fees after all this work is done. Kelly, how much is in the capital or the 410 Fund that we've collected in 2013 and 2014? Because I don't know that number off the top of my head.
And while she's coming to talk on that, going back, David, to your comments about former city manager and, you know, wanting to do these things. And again, that's what he was wanting and the staff was wanting. But again, that all got blessed through approvals of budgets by council.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And we had ...
Yeah, just to, you know, just make sure it's clear.
Sure.
Excuse me, David. While you're visiting, I would have to look.
Okay.
And I can do that while you're talking.
Okay. But we've almost spent down all the transportation capital fees that were plugged into the general fund on legitimate projects. We can provide that list to you if you desire. And then Kelly will tell us what else has been collected. There are sufficient transportation capital fees to do these projects?
Well, okay. That is a good explanation. I understand where that money has been sitting and where it's been transferred to. But in the ordinance, 815, series 1999, there are a couple of articles that kind of concern me with the expenditure for this particular turn lane. Article four says, "In the event that federal or state or other matching funds are not available, responsibility for the roadway improvements become the responsibility of the development that causes the improvements to be made." So in other words, it was intended to be money that could be used to leverage state grants or other matching funds outside of the city.
No, that doesn't say that. It says other matching funds. So it doesn't say outside of the city.
Would we not be double counting, though, if we say the $53,000 of the Trail Ridge Apartment transportation capital fees we'll provide? I'm not even sure if that check's been written yet. And those capital fees, transportation capital fees that have been generated by Keller and by Peoples Bank, how could they be matching fees?
I understand your point.
Or matching funds?
I understand your point. I'll let Aaron speak to that. But I want to draw your attention to the latter part of that article that says, "The roadway improvements become the responsibility of the development that causes the improvements to be made."
Right.
When this ordinance was contemplated, it really contemplated things like Karras Bible College. It contemplated one development that really caused all the issues. In hindsight, I wish that had read, became, become the responsibility of the developments that causes the improvements to be made. Because it really isn't just Trail Ridge. It's Trail Ridge plus the Woodland Exchange Building plus Peoples National Bank.
And I accept that. And then using that rationale, then those three developments would then pay the difference. If we accept that there are no state matching funds or other matching funds, they're simply the transportation capital fees, and you take the cumulative amount of those three projects, does that equal the 100 and, or what it was, 244,000 plus 86,000?
It does not.
Then why would those three developments not then pay the difference?
Well, because we've already assessed them their fees when they came on board because of this ordinance established what the rate would be. When, I'll go back to my history lesson, when the determination was made that the rate per vehicle trip should be about $110, the council said, no, 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 no. Because that equated to about $1,100 for a single-family home. And after spending months on doing the math, we sat in a work session and the ... And after spending months on doing the math, we sat in a work session and the mayor at that time said, you know, $1,100 is just too much to ask a single-family resident to add to their bill. $500 sounds more like it. Everybody nodded their heads and we ran off and redid all the numbers. So that we began collecting half of what was necessary for these system-wide improvements. So the, the system was flawed in that way, too. But what we knew is that there would be other contributions from other entities. So it's not just Trail Ridge. It's not just People's and it's not just Woodland Exchange, but it's also other single-family homes that have been built in that area. It's also the conversion of Sonic from a restaurant or from a hotel to a restaurant site. So it's the collection of all these fees that have happened from the entire city that helped make these system improvements.
And three projects are basically going to clean that fund out, correct?
Three projects.
Yeah. If you don't want to make the Trail Ridge the straw that breaks the camel's back and you attribute all of the projects in the city that have collected the capital transportation fee, we're going to spend it all on one turn lane that's going to serve three projects.
No. Over the years, we've collected about 900,000 in transportation capital fees that have been used for other projects. So is that, is that the point you're making? Is that we're using a third of it for this one project? You're absolutely right. You're right. And we've used the other-for-other system improvements throughout the city.
Erin had an explanation for us?
Let me just maybe ask a question for you. On ordinance 815.
Okay.
The more I read it, the more I have question marks about, you know, when you get to especially Article four and, and Article six. Because when you read Article four, you know, nowhere earlier in the ordinance did it even discuss matching funds. It didn't discuss that at all. And all at once then in Article four, you're really saying what happens if there aren't any matching funds or state or federal? In the event that federal or state or other matching funds are not available, responsibility for roadway improvements become the responsibility of the development that causes the improvements to be made. That, that comes across to me as, and again, I'll ask for your interpretation, that to spend those funds, you have to have some kind of federal, state, or other matching funds, according to the ordinance.
That's exactly how I translated it.
Yeah. And I wasn't party to the drafting.
You'd have done a better job.
You know, what I can tell you is that...
I have to read this ordinance in the context of the history that David recited, which I think makes a lot of sense, not only because of the, the planning side of it, but it corresponds with an important timing in Colorado legislative history, what happened. And, and so I, I think this also has some bearing on the legislative history of this ordinance. In 1999, the state legislature, at the prompting of a lot of home building and developer interests, passed what was, what became known as the Regulatory Impairment of Property Rights Act. And when that was passed, what, what it really ended up being was the codification of federal, important federal cases that had been decided in the early 90s. And you may have heard about these, the Nolan and the Dolan decisions. And those decisions pertain to the Supreme Court finding that in certain instances, local municipalities had violated property rights, constitutional rights of, of certain local business owners who had come in for development permits. Because the local municipalities at the time had imposed exactions, had said, okay, you're, you're needing to expand your plumbing store, but we want you to build this bike trail over here. And so the Supreme Court decided a couple of really important cases in this timeframe. And then the state legislature, in response to the lobbyists, and also with, with a lot of effort from the Colorado Municipal League and the lawyers who were involved in this, ended up drafting a law that pretty much codifies those federal cases. It's, it's really not, it doesn't do more than that, but it does codify those cases. And, and what it says is that the state legislature recognizes in a law that applies to all municipalities, including home rule municipalities, that individual private owner should not be required under the guise of the police power regulation of the use and development of property to bear burdens for the public good that should be more properly borne by the public at large. And so the idea was, because that was what was the upshot of the Nolan and Dolan cases, that you can't, the last guy in shouldn't have to pay the full freight. So I do agree, this is a little confusing in Articles four and six, because it does seem to place some limitation on those capital improvement, capital transportation fees. But what the legislature did in 1999 also was to say that any city that adopts a legislatively approved fee that's going to apply across the board to every developer, not, not single developers out and make them pay large amounts because, oh, this is a commercial property with, you know, with this, with this kind of impacts. But to come up with a standard, so I think that's what the city did when it created its vehicle trip per, per day and associated the cost of the fee with that. What the state legislature said, and then we have Supreme Court cases in Colorado upholding this, was that if you, you're not going to run afoul of these federal cases where you're taking property without just, with, without the right to do it, taking somebody's money or they're exacting something from them like a trail, you're not going to run afoul of those constitutional violations if you put in place a legislatively approved fee. And so when I looked at this, and I looked at the timing of it.
I understood why.
I understood the context and thought, well, it is confusing to somehow limit it to just the ability to have federal funds involved. But that's why it's hard to read it that way. Because other, because if you look at the state law that was passed at the time, and again, I'm, I haven't had a chance to study this, but if you look at just the way the state law was passed and you look at the idea of imposing a legislatively adopted impact fee, which is what this is, in the way that it was done, and then allow that to be used for these system-wide improvements, then you're completely square and consistent with what the state legislator, legislator, legislature was doing, I think. So...
I'm still confused, though. I have no problem with the fact that we would use this type of fee for this type of project. But why in 1999 did they add that it, if you couldn't get enough matching fees, then, oh, by the way, the developer will bear the rest of the cost?
And, and that's exactly my point.
And I, I mean, one could make the argument that, that that would mean that you're collecting from the developer these fees, segregating them, and saying, off limits, and you're now going to have to come up with...
The rest.
Rest. And, and I think the, the problem with that is that it, it, it's just not consistent at all with the state law. But I, I, you know, I would have to do a little more research on why those articles are in there.
I would suggest that at some point in the near future that we redraft this ordinance then.
And, and I would, I mean, that's exactly what I was thinking, that if, if I wasn't reading this ordinance and, and, I don't want to say using common sense, but let's just take even the state law, that it would make sense that you're using these fees and bringing them together to do a project like this. The problem is ordinance number 815 and the way it's written. So I would suggest based upon the state law and what I think is, at least in my mind, the way it should be done. And I think that's in accordance with the intent of ordinance number 815. What was the intent that, that, you know, that we go ahead and maybe approve this? This is, I'm talking out loud. And following that up, let's get this 815 straightened out and get it written the way it should be.
And, and I don't want to dominate this, but it's been bugging me for a week. Then the question comes up, we're not setting aside this, this fund for these kinds of projects only, but it can be used for these kinds of projects.
Yeah. We don't, we don't segregate any funds because we, we get better returns on our investment with pooled cash. Kelly's talked about that a lot. But we have the ability to, to track what those contributions have been.
Okay.
So we know what those quantities are.
Okay. And, and I'm thinking then, Eric has said that this is a prudent move to, to make this right, right turn lane. And the traffic count is no different than the traffic count we have from the project that we just discussed part of that. So what happens when we decide we've got to have a traffic, a right turn lane there? We've probably exhausted the majority of these capital, capital transportation fees, but it would come from some other source in this pool of money if we have to have another right turn lane.
Couple of things. One, we're not going to make that decision on the right turn lane. That's a CDOT decision. So we, it, just like this one, we're not the ones who said we have to have this right turn lane. So that's a distinction that needs to be made. If they were to require it, say, at Arby's, then, then that would be another discussion. We could match Arby's funds with 410 funds. We could make a contribution. We could try to get the state to make those improvements because it's not, again, it's not just Arby's that caused this to happen.
I'm, I'm just curious why that, that traffic study didn't prompt the same reaction.
I think a couple, go ahead.
The thresholds weren't met. The traffic wasn't as much.
Okay.
We had, we asked that question multiple times.
Okay.
And there just wasn't the same count. It's just shy of it, just like Trail Ridge is just over it.
One of the things that feeds into that right turn, believe it or not, is people coming off of Baldwin, turning left onto 24, sliding over and turning right onto Sheridan. So you've, there's, you've picked up additional traffic eastbound on 24 that's going to turn onto Sheridan that's not turning onto Chester.
Thank you, David.
Comment?
Yes, John?
I'm going to kick this horse one more time to see if it's dead. But let me recall what I thought I heard the last council meeting when we discussed some of these numbers. I remembered the $170,000. It's a line item in the budget. When we talked about these transportation capital fees and its right turn, Kelly came to the podium and some of the discussion we had was the following. I recall that I asked her, are these funds segregated from the general fund? Is there a line item or something like that? And she said, yes. That's my recollection. Then I asked her, after $170,000 is taken for this right turn lane, what's left? She said 24,000. You say 23, so I won't quibble about 1,000. So I see a new number today and it's 241,000. Oh, by the way, there's another 86,000 for Sheridan Avenue improvements. So where does the money come from? When I left that meeting thinking we had only 24,000 left, so the new information was 86K for Sheridan Avenue and the 241,000 number.
The, let me address the line item issue. There's a line in the budget for an expenditure for the right turn lane, and that's the 170,000. But it's not in a separate pot of money, but there is a, there is a line item. So it's not a separate fund. I don't know if that clears up your first point or not.
The line item that I was referring to, we account for different types of revenues as, as you've seen in our budget. We have a slew of lines that describe the types of revenues that we accumulate each year. And in the general fund, and now also in the 410 fund, there is a line item where we accumulate the revenues that we collect for transportation capital fees. And that's what I was referring to. So we have the ability by accounting for things specifically described by their nature into history. And that's how we've accumulated the revenues that we've used to provide that schedule of what's been spent to arrive at the approximately $24,000 that remains in the general fund.
Well, I guess, I'm, you know, kind of following up on Carol and John. Sally, I'd, I'd like to go back and those numbers that you were, you know, for the total cost, 170,000, 240,000? I just want each of those numbers, I just want to know where all those monies are coming from.
Sure. And so I'm, let, let me finish answering Councilman Schaefer's question. The, the 170 that you approved in the budget has morphed into 177. Okay? Order of magnitude is exactly the same. So that, the original project, the right turn lane, was the 241. As we looked at the design of this, we realized that if we only did the right turn lane, it would create an unsafe transition from Highway 24 to Sheridan. That was brought to us by the consulting engineer. To fix that, we need to spend that additional $86,000. So are you with me there? Do you understand the, the need? I'll talk about where the money's coming from in a second. But do you understand that we need that to, to match the cross slopes, to make those improvements, to make that transition off of the highway onto Sheridan? So the, when Kelly at the last meeting, when I wasn't here, said that there was $24,000 left in the transportation capital fees that had been stored in the general fund, that's an absolutely correct statement. So we've got $24,000 that can be applied to that 86. So the other, another portion of the 86 is going to be made up with fees that we've collected in 2013 and 2014. Now, those only total 26. I thought they had totaled more. So the 26 plus the 23 is about 40. So there's about 46,000 of that that will come out of the 410 fund to make an improvement on a city street.
To get to the 86.
Yes, sir, to get to the 86. The good news is, is that the Chip Seal project that Bill put out to bid came in under budget. And so we've got savings there that will allow us to put the 410 fund to finish up that 86,000.
So let me go back to that, again, that 241,000.
Yep.
So the 177,000 transportation capital fees, does that 177,000 include any capital fees that, that were, have been paid by Trail Ridge? Or is this money, other capital fees that already exist?
Already exist.
And so Trail Ridge, what they're contributing is the 63,000.
And their fees would have been 53, I think.
53, 4.
Well, and that's what Eric said at the last meeting, 53.
So there's an additional 10,000 that they're kicking in as well?
Correct. And the construction management and the design and all of that, too.
So that 177,000, I mean, we've talked about the, the Exchange Building, you know, Keller Williams and, and, and fees that were collected from People's Bank. But obviously, that 177 includes a lot more transportation capital fees that were collected.
It does.
So we're really taking all of those, that big conglomeration of fees that have been collected for transportation and making the decision to put them on this turn lane.
That's right.
Are Keller...
But those fees were limited. They're limited now with the 40 or 49,000 number that David used.
Suck it up.
Yeah. Suck it up.
Yeah. Are Keller Williams and People's Bank contributing any more above and beyond what they did in their original transportation fee?
No.
So...
It would be inappropriate for us to ask them to do that, I believe.
Maybe they'll plant flowers or something. Maybe they'll plant flowers or something. Okay.
No, this helps. I'm just trying to follow the trail of the numbers that I heard at the last council meeting.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Other questions from council? Guys are ready to go home? So Sally, you got anything else for us on this?
No, sir, other than there is a public hearing associated with, or a public comment, I should say.
Yeah, for the, the easement?
Yes.
So why don't I go ahead and do that and, and open up the floor for any public comment on ordinance number 1212 concerning the permanent easement to be granted to the City of Woodland Park by People's National Bank? Anyone have a comment? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment. So we've got two things, council. We can ask more questions. We can deliberate. The first is, it was actually the ordinance number 1212 for the easement, and then the other motion would be to approve the development agreement. And I guess the development agreement is actually for the spending of the money and...
Correct.
And that.
Yes.
Transportation capital fees.
You need two separate votes?
Yes. And, and in fact, it's, it's written on, it's on page 81, that it was, it's two separate motions.
Are you ready for the first motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move to approve ordinance number 1212.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Approve ordinance number 1212 for the permanent easement to the city by People's National Bank. Any further discussion? Then we will take a vote.
Thank you. Bravetto?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And, and then I would recommend to the staff that we...
Got it.
Look at ordinance number 815.
Thank you.
And then now we'll move on to item number 9D. Sally?
Thank you. 9D is fairly straightforward. This is the Teller County Waste Conditional Use Permit, Special Use Permit and Site Plan due to the pending litigation associated with this subject's property's annexation. The applicant has requested that this be tabled to July 17th. We would request a motion with that respect.
So move. Second.
Have a motion in second to table ordinance number 1196 to July the 17th, 2014. Any discussion? We'll take a vote.
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 11, anyone in the audience have any comments they'd like to make?
Oh, come on, David.
Hearing none, we'll move on to reports. Mayor's report, two weeks ago, Teacres had their inauguration of the mayor of Divide, and that was Pot Kettle. And the mayor of Woodland Park attended the inauguration, presented a key of the city to Pot Kettle, and the mayor representing the city of Woodland Park received a golden scooper.
With jewels.
With jewels. But it was a really nice event, and, and what is amazing, if people hadn't heard, that fundraiser for Teacres raised over $12,000.
Wow.
Which is pretty, pretty darn amazing. So really good event and for a good cause. Upcoming events, next Friday, May the 9th, is the Leader Cast at Woodland Park Community Church. Chamber members receive $20 discount. Limited time on that. Register now for the best price. Saturday, May the 10th, is the Winter Farmer Market, Farmers Market. That's at the Cultural Center from 9 to 1. Saturday, May the 10th, is the U-Pass Historical Society hosts the History Park Tours, 10:00 AM in History Park behind the library. Monday, May the 12th, Community Blood Drive, Our Lady of the Woods Church from 2 to 7. Tuesday, May the 13th, Tax Protest and Appeals Process hosted by the Teller County Tax Assessor, and that's at the Cultural Center from 5:30 to 6:30. So if you think you want to do some tax protesting and appealing, that's probably a, a good meeting to attend. And I'm about to lose my voice. And so I'll turn to Carol.
I have nothing.
Gary? Ken?
I do. Please help.
We were weaving Woodland Park, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful in association with Keep America Beautiful. We're fortunate enough to receive the President's Circle Award, which I have here.
Wow.
From Keep America Beautiful. If you want to pass that down to the mayor, or maybe you'll, I don't know if you're not going to. We're going to bring it up here, I think, on the screen. There it is. I don't think you'll read it there.
Sorry, the equipment was down.
Anyway, that's a, quite a nice result, reward, and it's as a result of last year's Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Annual Report to Keep America Beautiful, our affiliate, and committee was awarded this for the 2013 year. Along with that, we also received some Mankind donations, as you can see on the screen, from Troy Bill. We thank them very much for that, of a tiller. We had five planting trials, five hand cultivators, and the tiller. And you can see in the picture a lot of the people that are part of this committee that participated. They received 200 trash bags also. So that was quite nice, and it's a, the total result of this committee being involved in trying to get grants and going after things. Same thing with what you see up there now. 2014 Coca-Cola, Keep America Beautiful Public Space Recycling Bins. We got 18 of them. So that's going to be good, and we debated that a lot, and how bear-proof they are, and I think we made a good decision. I guess we'll find out.
They only offered so many types.
Yeah. A couple of other quick comments on the, the next slide, the Bear Ware Program. It's the second annual drawing contest in Columbine Elementary. Winners to be announced next meeting, 5:15. And I think it's all grade levels, over 500 children were reached. Anything you want to add to that?
We, we visited with them earlier this week on the 30th, and yeah, we talked literally every grade in forums, and it was, it was really wonderful how many children we reached. I got three hugs that night from children, so telling me that they were happy to learn about bears. Yes, bear hugs. And we'll talk more about, I'll have a presentation prior to the winners next, next time. It'll be short, but...
So there's a lot going on in this committee. Also, if you go to the next slide, we have adopt a garden program where we're, some areas we're going to take care of and keep beautiful in, in town. As you can see, the library, Pizza Hut, and other areas, and some of the boulders have been donated by Cripple Creek and Victor Goldmine. We appreciate that from them. There's four spots, and we have 10 potential applicants that have already stepped up, volunteered to do this, so I don't know how we're going to decide who's going to do what.
We've received four of the applications. We've asked them to give us a detailed, well, sort of a summary of why they would take that spot and what would make them the best candidate to par through that, and our Subcommittee for Beautification will look at those.
And we're really emphasizing that, that, you know, if they take it on, they have to take it on seriously and be there frequently, because around here you have to water frequently and you have to weed. So they, that's the responsibility. It's not, take it on, plant something, and let it go.
We've worked with Public Works with this quite a little bit. Bruce Vanderpool is, is assisting me on this, making sure that we cover some of those various details. These spots here will be watered by the city. They will be planted this year with city flowers, but they will be maintaining them, so.
And lastly, cleanup, June 7th, 12th Annual, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. June 7th, Memorial Park and downtown Woodland Park, of course. Registration begins at 9:00. Check in, receive assignments, pick up vests, maps, and bags. Bring a refillable water bottle, work gloves, and sunscreen. There will be a free cookout at noon.
Yes, absolutely. I want everyone to come and help out.
So that's all I have, unless Lisa wants to add something else. I appreciate all her help in putting this all together. She's really key to it.
Thank you.
No? John?
No.
Aaron?
David?
Brian's going to give a quick update, and I've got a couple of things that aren't on the agenda.
Promise to be quick. Woodland Station, we're working with the Lot 2 AmeriGas development team in assessing their off-site requirements, and we're doing that internally with other department heads, Kip and Bill and Sally, relative to methodology. When we assess their build-out, what they're going to actually design and construct for both Lot 2 and the AmeriGas site, we'll formulate a methodology. And interestingly enough, with all the C-DOT discussions tonight, there are C-DOT requirements, there are stormwater requirements, there are water and sewer, dry utility requirements. So once we formulate this assessment methodology, it'll carry on to other lots that will be built out within Woodland Station. So we'll carry this through, and we'll have a working knowledge of, of what it'll take to finish out the improvements within Woodland Station. So I'll keep council updated as we move through that process. I know it'll be timely for some other, some other considerations in the future. Main Street continues with weekly meetings, sensor assessment, preparing for the application that's due July 1st, again, focusing on the four primary elements of Main Street, organization, promotion, historic preservation, design, and, and economic development. It's been a very active group. Again, again, we're meeting weekly, and there's a lot of energy in that group, and I, hopefully there'll be a continued dialogue as we relate to the application period and a lot of media coverage, and we look forward as we move through that process. Also, we've begun a database inventory in collaboration with the County Assessor's Office. We're conducting a parcel-oriented, commercial-oriented, commercial survey that will document commercial property owners, business owners, commercial activity by type, building square footage, vacancy, contact information, property values, and tied to geographic reference, including the DDA boundary, Main Street, and Woodland Park at large. We've had a lot of databases ad hoc, but we want something we can update on a monthly basis. Again, this is a collaborative effort by several departments within the city, and also the County Assessor is being cooperative, very cooperative, as it relates to using their database and being able to populate the fields within that database. And I'll, we'll do a presentation as we build that back to council. I think you'll find it interesting. We'll use it primarily in this, the intent is to create a commercial database particularly relevant to retail sales that can be, again, updated monthly. And we'll be able to look at specific areas and assess, make assessments regarding retail sales and importantly, sales tax growth in the future. As you may have noticed, I wanted to mention back on Woodland Station, you've probably seen the marketing sign that, where we're doing a cooperative marketing effort with the development team for, for Lot 2 and the AmeriGas site. This will be ongoing progress, and we're already seeing the, reaping the benefits of that with a lot of contacts, sharing contact information back and forth, so that's been proactive. You've seen Tractor Supply Site being developed. My source was right on target. I think it was the next several days after the closing that they get, they had their equipment out there and removing dirt. They have an aggressive schedule. They hope to be opening in the month of August. I think I heard the, the date of August 4th. Hopefully, they'll stay on target, and I think weather will cooperate, hopefully, as we move into the, the spring and summer months. Finally, Pro Challenge, one of my responsibilities in the area of partner funding is to raise funding that offsets the city's costs. So there's a lot of attention given to that, and we've set the framework for that in various event categories that we'll go after and aggressively looking at those partners. We're on a very tight schedule, the next 30 days, so again, I'll report back to council how we do, but it's looking very good. And working with Pro Challenge, it's been a blast, and it's been a very positive movement through the city, particularly with all the individuals that are involved. Any questions that I can answer for council this evening?
Okay. Thanks, Brian. The Cowhand mural is up. If you haven't seen it, take a look at it. It looks very nice. It fits there very, very nicely. We've, we've talked with the council in the past about dog parks, and it's never risen to a level of importance for us to spend money. I've had two private entities come to me with wanting to sponsor building a dog park. The price tag doesn't scare them. I'm working with Bill and Parks and Recs to find a spot. We'll keep you posted, but we're going to, we're going to follow up on that. It would add a maintenance component for Bill's crews. We're aware of that. We understand that. But we think it's something that quite a few people in the community want, but we've never been willing to spend a lot of money on it because of the, the number of people that were requesting it. So we'll keep you posted on that. You saw tonight that when ordinances are written, sometimes there are components that are easily misunderstood or could be misinterpreted or just aren't well thought out. I have another example of one that was just recently done, and it has to do with chickens. You remember the chicken ordinance?
Oh, dear.
This ordinance included a line that simply says, "No variances from these standards will be permitted." Well, I would suggest to you that whenever we do ordinances that are brand-spanking-new, we should never include that line because there's growing pains associated with them. We learn new things. There's a young family that wants to put in a chicken coop in a place that this won't allow. But when you see their yard and you see the site, you see the neighbors, it makes absolute sense to put it in a place. This says they can't, and they have no recourse. There's no variance allowed. There's no administrative review. So I'm going to work with that, with the staff, to bring back an ordinance to you, to adjust this ordinance, so that this person can do something that's an extremely reasonable and well-thought-out thing to do. That's all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Not having ordinance. Media adjourned.